Good evening, and welcome to the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, November 19th, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. It's our practice to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a practice that we established a few years ago, and I'm proud to say that we continue it, and I wish more meetings in our community began with the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, welcome tonight. The chambers are full, and we certainly appreciate all of our citizens. We have many youth here tonight, many adults who have come out to either listen or participate and perhaps discuss various elements on the agenda. I would like to just recognize a couple of groups. First of all, we have a scout group here, and I told them that I wouldn't put them on the spot, but I just want to recognize that they're here. This is the White Stag Patrol out of Troop 227, and they're working on their citizenship and the community merit badge. And one of the requirements is for them to attend some public board meetings, whether it's school board, or city council, or maybe even the county board. And tonight, we have various scouts in the audience. Fellas, if you just raise your hand when I call on your name, okay? We got AJ, and I might mispronounce your name, Derovin? Where's AJ? There you are. Daniel Kramer? Where's Daniel?
He's on his way.
Matthew Hafner? Mitchell, is it Weiderman? Thomas Niles Melkert? Sam Schmitz? Where are you, Sam? He's on his way, too. Michael McLean? Sean Carlson? Did I miss any Boy Scouts? And I know that Mr. Hafner is here. Are you one of the Scout Masters or Scout Leaders?
I'm one of the adult leaders.
One of the adult leaders. Are there other adult leaders here tonight? I saw some, parents, maybe some parents came in.
Parents, you count.
Well, parents certainly count. I don't know the names, but just put your hand up. There they are. Thanks for bringing the boys here tonight and helping to supervise. And again, the scouts, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting. It might get kind of long, but if you choose to leave at a certain time, that's perfectly all right. So if you have a time set, you know, that you want to stand up and walk out, even if we're in the middle of a discussion, that's okay. So I'll leave it up to your Scout Master and your parents to decide that. Welcome. Now, for the council members, are there any additions, or deletions, or changes to the agenda? Kevin, do you have something you wanted to put on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an amendment to the November 5th resolution on the wastewater treatment plant interceptor regarding temporary easements.
Okay, do we have some paper on that here?
We'll make a presentation at the time with homes.
Okay. Okay, the interceptor line for the wastewater treatment plant. I also want to put two things under miscellaneous. One is, you may have seen in the newspaper this morning, that our Rice Memorial Hospital Board is talking about asking the city council to consider extending the terms of the hospital board members, and that there are some new regulations probably coming forth from the Minnesota Hospital Association requiring certification of board members. I'd like the council to think about that at the end of the meeting, and I'd also like our city attorney to give his opinion on that, if he has an opinion at that time. And then, as you are aware, we had a joint meeting between the county board, the school board, and the city council, and one of the requests that came out of that meeting was a joint committee made up of two members from each elected group. I'd like the council to think about that, and we'll deal with that at the end of the meeting. All right, if there are no other changes or additions, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, and for the members in the chambers here tonight, the consent agenda is a list of minutes of various meetings that occur between the city council meetings, and the council, if they choose, can approve those minutes as a block. Tonight, the consent agenda includes the minutes of the last city council meeting of November 5th, the utilities commission minutes of November 13th, the planning commission minutes of November 14th, the building inspection report for the month of October, the library board minutes of September 20th, the police commission minutes of October 1st, and the housing redevelopment authority minutes of October 9th. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull the planning commission minutes of November 14th.
All right. Anyone else? All right, with the exception of the planning commission minutes of November 14th, Councilmember Dacken?
There's also an October 19th, housing and redevelopment minutes are part of this package also. They weren't listed, but it's in there.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anything else? All right, with the exception of the planning commission minutes of November 14th, those in favor of approving the rest of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The consent agenda is approved. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of items, a couple of different topics I want to talk about. One is number eight, the Pizza Ranch Plan Review. Couple of questions and concerns here. First of all, I'm wondering, was this something that was done after the fact? You know, I did notice a lot of construction going on in that area, and then I see that it comes through for approval. I'd like some clarification on the process there.
Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council. Yes, there was a significant amount of dirt work that took place on the site before staff was aware of what was planned to be built on that site. As soon as we were aware that there was activity, we contacted the people on the site and were put in touch with the contractor and the owner, and tried to salvage the process as best we could at that time. Again, this is a situation where the people involved should have known better.
And then, a follow-up, there was apparently quite a bit of discussion on the number of parking spaces that were appropriate, and our ordinance would have required 90, but the commission says that the ordinance typically results in too many parking spaces, so they approved the fact that there were only 74. Is this something that we need to change? I mean, it seems a little bit odd to me that our ordinance would stipulate something, and then we say that doesn't seem right, so we're going to put something less.
In a plan review like this, the planning commission has a certain amount of discretion based on the type of use. Historically, our ordinance has shown to require more parking than is necessary for businesses, not for all types of businesses. I think the planning commission will be taking a look at all of the parking requirements and trying to come up with either a better schedule of parking requirements, or else they will look at having some type of intensity modifier to make those determinations.
Okay.
They were convinced that, in this particular case, 74 spaces were adequate for that size facility.
All right, then I want to move on to number 10. Welcome to our home conditional use permit. I've been at a couple of these meetings and didn't make this one because I didn't know it was going to be pulled off the table. When I read this, it seems that we're permitting this thing, or allowing the conditional use permit, with a lot of things that aren't done yet. There are a couple of things that aren't done yet. The stormwater calculations, and then the access to the road, and then the stormwater ordinance said it shall be met at all times. It seems we're putting a lot of pressure on somebody, and I don't know who it is. I mean, the planning commission approved it, and then stormwater calculations have to be approved before we issue permits, and I would imagine that that becomes the engineer's call then. My question is, you know, this has been tabled for so many times, and it's gone back and forth. What was the hurry? Why couldn't we wait and get these things done?
I think the planning commission just got to the point where they felt comfortable with the land use aspect. They're used to dealing with land use issues and not necessarily some of the civil issues that come up. Plus, the second 60-day period expires, I think, on the 28th or 29th of this month. I think the consensus of the planning commission was just enough is enough. It's not atypical for the planning commission to approve a conditional use permit subject to the stormwater compliance. That's very typically a condition. In my opinion, this process has been held hostage far too long, and, you know, in a combination of ways, some of them staff-induced, some of them developer-induced, some of them process-induced, this thing has just drug out too long. I support the planning commission's decision to move this along.
It was maybe held hostage, and I didn't attend all of the meetings, but I know that there were problems getting information to staff in a timely manner a couple of times, and then staff wasn't able to review it. I'm just concerned, well, let me back up. What about the highway engineer and the access to the project, and how it's going to have an ingress and egress on that?
Under our ordinance, it requires the city engineer to make that decision, and to the best of my knowledge, the city engineer has approved the access point. Typically, then, the step would be to go to the county engineer and simply get a county highway access permit, and that has more to do with reviewing it for culvert needs and access that way, as opposed to traffic. We've been in contact with the county engineers and had his comments for some time, and he doesn't have a problem with this location. He preferred it further to the north so it would line up with 16th Avenue, but he says that's not an issue at this point, and his concern was that the access not be in the turn lane, which it is not. It would be north of the turn lane.
This road is going to be redone in 2009, I believe, was the last county project, and so it will comply with whatever they have in mind then for that road at that time?
If there's some need to tweak it at that time, it's our understanding in dealing with the county engineer that he would work with the property owners to make the adjustments at that time.
Okay. I'm still just a bit uncomfortable with the process that we followed here, and it was also cumbersome for the residents in the area that had been following this. They were never exactly sure when it was going to be pulled off the table, and that's through no fault of anyone, but it's a kind of an unfortunate circumstance that it sits out there and it can be pulled at any particular time, and the residents that may or may not have a concern or would want it to have spoken, didn't necessarily know that it was going to be acted upon. Well, those are my concerns on that topic.
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following Dennis's line of questions here, tell me something about the stormwater calculations. How extensive are they? I mean...
I would defer to the city engineer for that comment.
Councilman Dacken, members of the council, it's probably a 40-page, 50-page booklet.
And what are some of the major items in that 40 pages?
Well, they do a review of the existing conditions, the 10-year, 100-year post-conditions, 10-year, 100-year pond calculations, water quality calculations, and then also access as it goes to the outfall.
Okay. Well, Dennis, I agree, this is really significant. I mean, we have enough water issues within our city. We certainly don't need this to get by without the appropriate data that we know what we're doing out there with respect to stormwater.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo some of the concerns that my fellow council members have already stated. It bothers me that, knowing that this is a major point of contention in regards to stormwater issues, that the planning commission was never apparently able to have those calculations available to them during the process. And I understand that part of this is developer-induced and part of it is process-induced. I get that, but I'm extremely concerned that we don't have enough knowledge to be able to, in regard to that one particular single issue, to be able to reasonably approve the conditional use permit. I have grave concerns with it. Now, I know that a council can deny a conditional use permit only for reasons relating to public health, safety, and general welfare, and I would, I suppose, ask the city attorney if he would care to comment on whether or not the stormwater calculation issues, not having those, are sufficient in regards to public health, safety, and general welfare as to warrant denial of a conditional use permit.
I don't think it would be sufficient, councilman. The action taken clearly makes the action taken contingent on those calculations being done, and it's up to staff to see that it's done, and that it's followed, and that it's
Even though we have a process that is supposed to involve publicly-appointed and elected boards, that should have certainly, I think, part of this information at their disposal. I don't doubt that staff can do this and they can come up with the conclusions, but it bothers me that the publicly-appointed and elected bodies didn't have these stormwater calculations available to them during this consideration.
I have a question. Bruce, perhaps you could address this. On page seven of the planning commission minutes, under point number seven, it says that "The exterior architectural appearance and functional plan of the improvements are compatible with the existing architectural appearance and functional plan of other uses in the vicinity." Now, this proposed project started out at 99 residents, and I understand it's down to 76 at this point. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is this a single-story building, or is this a multi-story building?
It's a two-story facility.
Two-story facility. And what is the length of this building? I remember when it first came to us, it was something like 400 yards long, or 300 yards long?
No, it's just over 400 feet long.
Oh, feet, not yards. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so 400 feet is still, that's 130 yards long for a two-story building. Okay, how does that, how is that compatible with other existing architectural appearance and functional plans of other uses in the vicinity? What other structures do we have around there that are anywhere close to that?
Well, I think, if you'll note, it says, "Other than its scale, its residential appearing, the developers," in my opinion, "have done a pretty good job of tweaking the exterior architectural design of the building so that it's more in keeping with the residential neighborhood." It's, again, there's a lot of two-story homes out in that neighborhood that are quite a bit taller than this structure will be. It's not a single long roof line. The roof line is broken up with multiple gables and style points, and, you know, the planning commission really didn't see a lot of difference between this than if you had a number of row houses or side-by-side townhouses or something in that area that were two-story. You know, I think it's important to remember that in that R2 district, because they allow senior facilities, or nursing homes, rest homes, and retirement homes, it's important to remember that it's already presumed that there's going to be some deviation in scale from a typical residential neighborhood, and that that has to be expected in the course of reviewing those facilities. It's not reasonable to expect that a retirement home is going to be built to the same scale as one or two-family residential structures, yet because of the very nature of the use being residential and senior housing in and of itself, it's, in its most basic form, compatible with those low-density residential neighborhoods. I've heard very little complaints about the use itself in the neighborhood. The concern was the number of units and the drainage issues. And, again, that's a subjective finding that the planning commission makes. They try to make it as objective as possible and make it as factual as possible, but the bottom line, architectural compatibility is pretty subjective.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question of process, Bruce. No construction can begin until these items are resolved, the calculations, and the approval from the county, and all of those sorts of things. Is that...
That's correct. No permits for construction will be issued. I do not believe that that would prohibit initial dirt work from occurring on the site if those sections of the city's stormwater ordinance are met for the excavations, that there are grading plans, stockpiling plans, erosion control plans in place.
Okay.
But we would not issue any construction permits.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, who actually does the stormwater review, the calculation review? Is it city staff, or do we hire somebody to review that?
It's been done both ways in the past.
And on this, how will it be done? Do we know?
Consultant.
Consultant will do it?
Yeah, and it's because of a staffing issue.
I guess I'm troubled by the length of time they had to do the calculation, and there's nothing to review. I mean, this thing has been on the, for the planning commission several times, and it's been months, from what I recall.
The calculations were submitted about three weeks ago, I think, full calculations, so...
And so they're under review, or will be?
They have been received for review, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to refer back to that page seven, under item number four. One of the findings, a fact of the planning commission, was that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are shown on the plans and will be part of the project. I'm curious as to how they could make the determination that there's adequate drainage when we don't have the calculations done.
They also pondered that in making that finding, hence the condition. They are making a lay opinion regarding the adequate drainage because there's a stormwater system, storm sewer system on-site, and stormwater ponds provided on the site plans. So they're saying that they're shown on the plans, but it will actually be up to the review of the calculations to determine the functionality of the system.
And to follow up with the question previously asked, how long is it going to take before those calculations are in? Any guess?
I believe they should be available next week.
Okay. But because the second extension under the 60-day rule is just about up, we either say yea or nay to this tonight.
Well, I believe, under that same law, you would have the ability to enact another 60-day extension. I would defer to the city attorney in that regard, but I think a council is able to do it twice.
I guess I would like that question answered.
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I just saw these minutes 10 minutes ago, and I had no idea these issues were going to be raised tonight.
I have a question, Bruce. Again, the end product here is a senior citizen? Is it restricted to senior citizens for this residence?
It's assisted living primarily.
Assisted living.
Yes. It's not intended for able-bodied people that would, you know, be looking for an alternate living option. It's primarily senior housing, and I can't remember the average age of the occupants that the developers stated they had in their other facilities, but I want to say in low 80s is probably the average age.
And the planning commission had the opportunity to evaluate this project against the overall housing needs of the community, and felt that this was something that it would fit into this community and not be built and be only partially used, or something? I mean, do we have enough citizens to warrant this size of a project?
To a certain extent, I don't think that's the planning commission's job. I think that's a market-driven decision made by the developers, and, you know, is there enough, are there enough hungry people to support all the restaurants? Again, the market's going to make that decision.
Okay. My concern is that, you know, if we approve this, if the council approves this, you know, we have a developer coming into town that's not from this community. Is that correct? He's from outside of the area.
That's correct.
And he's going to build a 76-unit project for elderly citizens that is one of the largest buildings in our community, I believe, right? Other than maybe the college and the schools? It's got to be one of the biggest buildings that'll happen in this community. If it's 130 yards long, two stories high, I don't think we have many buildings like that in Wilmer. And that, you know, if he builds it, I hope he's very successful. You know, I don't want an empty building sitting out there, and, you know, now what do we do with such a large complex? That's my concern. So I hope all those analyses and all those reviews have taken place, that this is certainly needed in this community.
Well, I guess at some point, then, in the zoning process, the council better consider making a market analysis part of the review process, because it's really separate from the land use decision. If that's the route the council wants to go, if that's what the concern is, then we need to sit down and figure out a different way to address it, because that's typically not a land use issue.
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you for that explanation. Mick, did you want to offer any comment on this as our administrator?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it seems like every time we have a housing project brought forth, we work really hard to try to find a way to keep it out of Wilmer, and I think this is one project that we should embrace. It reaches out to a group of people that, obviously, the developers have determined are there, or they, I don't believe that they would propose to construct such a facility if the demand wasn't there. In regard to the stormwater issues, it's not uncommon. I mean, we can go back and look in our records time after time, and I think that we're going to see, in many cases, that conditional use permits have been approved by the planning commission with a series of conditions. And whether those stormwater calculations are made available tomorrow, or 30 days from now, is not really relevant. What is relevant is that they're approved by the city engineer, who's not going to issue a permit tomorrow or 30 days from now until he's satisfied that the plans address the concerns expressed by the planning commission. That's why they made it one of five conditions.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Anderson?
I'm going to move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a... We have a motion and a second to file the minutes of the Wilmer Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 14th. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. The project will move ahead. We will now move down to number seven on the agenda, which is a scheduled public hearing. And the first public hearing is now open. This hearing has to do with an ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Wilmer, and it involves Mr. Don Williamson. Bruce, would you explain that?
Mayor Hightkey, members of the council, Don and Carol Williamson have petitioned the city for the annexation of approximately 12 acres of land that's located on the east side of Southwest 15th Street. The planning commission reviewed the matter and has recommended approval. It's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the annexation ordinance, give it a number, and publish it.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments about this proposed ordinance which extends the corporate limits of the city of Wilmer? Does anybody want to say something about this? Don, can I ask you to come up to the microphone? Can you just explain, you know, what the concept is here and what, where are we going with this?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I have some comments that I had given to Bruce for maybe later during a preliminary plat hearing, or not a hearing, to introduce the preliminary plat. I'm sorry if I don't know all the procedures.
Right.
But, Mr. Mayor, we, my wife and I purchased this 12 acres on Southwest 15th Street that is not currently in the city limits. We're asking for it to be annexed because we want to develop a housing project there.
All right. Thanks, Don. Anyone else from the audience that wishes to comment? All right, the public hearing is now closed on this matter. Now the matter comes up to the city council table. Councilmembers? Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to move adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance which extends the corporate limits of the city of Wilmer. Further comment about that? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once this is annexed in, how soon will 15th Street be paved then?
If the plat development stays on schedule, as early as 2008.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes out of St. John's or Wilmer Township or what township?
Wilmer Township.
Wilmer Township they're aware of and...
Absolutely. They have filed a waiver with the city where they have waived any objection to the annexation.
Thank you.
They continue to be our best ally for annexation.
Anyone else? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion and resolution passes. The ordinance will be adopted, and the corporate limits of the city of Wilmer have been again extended. We'll move to the second public hearing, and that public hearing is now open. This has to do with another ordinance that amends a previous Wilmer ordinance, number 1192, by establishing a franchise fee. I'd like to call on our city administrator, Mr. Schmidt, to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and guests. Tonight, we're considering the adoption of an ordinance to establish a franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy's business being conducted within the city of Wilmer. At the last city council meeting, the council introduced an ordinance. It set monthly fees for various property classifications. And assuming there had been no major issues or changes proposed, procedurally, we would have voted yea or nay on the ordinance tonight and it would have either been implemented or struck down. It's become, I don't know if you want me to get into the budget in any great detail, Mr. Mayor, but the reason the franchise fee resurfaced at this point is to generate some additional revenue in the 2008 budget. The finance committee up to this point has been focusing the use of those revenues to address some stormwater mitigation issues throughout the community. Shortly after the ordinance was introduced, I was in contact with representatives of CenterPoint Energy, Mr. Al Swintek, who is with us tonight, and I'm assuming will want to speak to this issue as well, Mr. Mayor. When I originally drafted the ordinance, I was using some information that was provided to me from CenterPoint Energy. Obviously, there were some differences in how these projected fees were to be determined. I simply extrapolated the numbers in the example that was provided to me from CenterPoint Energy to go from, in that example, $163,000 and some dollars to reach our goal of $250,000. Mr. Swintek pointed out to me, and I'm sure he will explain in better detail than I, that that schedule that was introduced a couple of weeks ago provides for some inequities in the percent charged per customer. I received a letter dated November 14th from CenterPoint Energy, Mr. Swintek's office, suggesting some refinements to that schedule and also proposing some other issues or modifications the council may want to consider prior to adopting an ordinance. Regardless of those other issues, I think that the fee revisions that are being proposed by CenterPoint Energy make a lot of sense. And I would recommend that at the close of this hearing, the council republish with a new fee schedule and hear this matter again on December 3rd. And I will let Mr. Swintek and others talk about some of these other issues that are of concern to CenterPoint Energy at some point in the hearing here. So I think, Mr. Mayor, procedurally, we should follow through with the hearing, close the hearing, and again, it would be my recommendation that the fee schedule be revised and that we republish.
And have a second public hearing then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Swintek, would you like to make some comments? Thank you for coming out here tonight.
Sir, oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Al Swintek. I'm with CenterPoint Energy. And it's my pleasure to make a few comments this evening with regard to the proposed ordinance under your consideration. Before I do that, I thought maybe it would be helpful just to give you a quick snapshot of CenterPoint Energy's relationship with the city of Wilmer. We've served the community's natural gas energy needs since 1962 and currently serve a little over 6,500 commercial and residential customers. We've got close to 5.8 or actually over $5.8 million worth of infrastructure in the ground and about half a million feet of mains running up and down the streets to serve, again, the energy, the natural gas energy needs of the community and pay about $100,000 in personal property tax based on the value of that infrastructure. With regard to the franchise fee, let's say CenterPoint Energy serves 260 communities in Minnesota. We've got 27 communities that impose franchise fees on our natural gas service. So it's not something that every community does, but it's certainly something that several communities have considered doing. So from a matter, from a public policy perspective, we would obviously prefer that the franchise fee not be passed in that it increases the cost of somebody's energy bill. When they open the envelope, it's just going to cost more. But having said that, if it's in the council's opinion that this is the, in the best interest of the community, we are going to work with the city to make sure that the fee is imposed as fairly and equitably and administratively efficiently as possible. As Mr. Schmidt mentioned, when we learned about the ordinance and saw a copy of the fee schedule, took a look at it, and did make some recommendations for your consideration that we think that if the decision is to move forward with the franchise fee, there's some suggestions here that we think would make the fee a little bit more reasonable and equitable. I've got six suggestions. They're in your packet of information that Mr. Schmidt passed out, three of which are fairly substantive and then three of which are more, you might classify as administrative, more administratively focused. The three substantive issues are the fee schedule itself. We have different customer classifications based on whether it's a residential customer, whether it's a commercial customer, the size of the customer, or whether it's a, what we call dual-fuel customer, meaning a customer that can switch over between natural gas and propane or natural gas and oil. And what we're suggesting is that, we think that using a per-meter fee schedule is the best way to go, but having said that, the original fee schedule that was proposed places a little bit higher burden on some classifications of those customers than on others. And so as part of that, it's not up to us to set the fee schedule, but as a suggestion, we have made some recommendations that will kind of equalize the burden a little bit more, a little better than the original ordinance as it was proposed. So that was one suggestion. Another suggestion was that if the franchise fees are going to be imposed on the gas customers, it seemed to make sense to us that they also be imposed on the electric customers. And it's a little different here, of course, because it's a city-owned municipal system. So it's a little different than if XL Energy or Conexus or some other investor-owned utility was providing electric service. But typically, in all of the other communities that we have franchise fees in, if it's imposed on the gas side, it's imposed on the electric side, and that's just a matter of kind of equity, making sure that there's a level playing field between both utilities. So that was a second suggestion. And a third substantive suggestion would be that the franchise fees would be in lieu of the permit fees that we are currently paying to the city. The reason for that is because every time that we, well, first of all, from a scale perspective, if a franchise fee is imposed, we would be collecting approximately $250,000 worth of fees from our customers and literally just collecting them and then paying them to the city as the franchise fee portion. In return for basically the administrative aspect of all of that, we would ask that the permit fees, which are generated when we're expanding our system or when we're reinforcing our system, when we're enhancing our system, the very thing that will add to the franchise fee, it's kind of a double dip if you have to pay permit fees to expand your system and then generate more franchise fees, which are then also paid over. So those are the three substantive things that we would suggest and request. The other three things are more administrative. It's simply the start date. We need a little bit more time just to handle the programming and make sure that we're able to communicate with our customers that this fee is happening and here's what it means. You know, when they open the bill, they see this line item. What is that? We need to communicate that to the customers, and we do that by a little bill message on the bottom of the bill. So if we could start the, if the council chooses to go forward, the fee really needs to start, it can't start January 1st because we just don't have the time to implement it technically. In addition to that, some councils, not all, but many councils, have a provision in the fee schedule in the ordinance that says that future councils will review the franchise fee ordinance to see if it still makes sense. It might make sense today, but does it make sense two years from now, three years from now? Rather than just having it, once you pass it, it goes on forever, they actually put some kind of language in the ordinance that says they'll review it on an every-other-year basis or something like that. And then lastly, again, from an administrative perspective, it's much more efficient to collect the fees and pay them to the city on a quarterly basis rather than every single month. And so those are the three sort of administrative suggestions that we have. So three substantive, three administrative, and I guess that's really about it. I'm available to answer any questions that you have and understand that these budget issues can be difficult, but we don't want to put our customers at an unreasonably difficult situation either, so...
What I'm going to do is ask you to wait after you sit down. There will be some questions, but I want to take other public testimony from the audience.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Swintek.
Should I sit down now? Okay, thank you.
Don't leave the room. Thank you. Are there other members in the audience that wish to make some comments or ask some questions about this proposed ordinance? John, would you come over to the microphone, please? And please introduce yourself, John. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is John Sullivan, 508 Southeast 13th Street here in Wilmer. I'm here to speak in opposition to this franchise fee. And it sounds like a cigarette fee tax. Let's call it tax-to-tax. And if you need to raise money for your infrastructure, let's do it with a levy. That's what it's for. I don't think you need to have a franchise fee here, a franchise fee there. If we're hurting on a tax basis, that's what the levy's for, to increase the levy. I got my tax statement today. My taxes went up 9.3% this year. If it went up 12%, if that's what the city needs, fine. I think that's the way it should be. I don't think we should penalize the private business that is doing a good service for our community and not do it the way we're supposed to do it, with a tax instead of a fee. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wish to comment on this or ask any questions? If not, I will close the public hearing, and now the matter comes back to the city council table. And Councilmember Gardner, I know you wanted to ask Mr. Swintek a question. Al, would you come back to the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Swintek, welcome.
Yes.
And thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
So what I'm seeing in front of me is the ordinance as written, and I see in the packet all sorts of different schedules. What schedule is it that you propose we revise, too?
Well, again, it's really the city council decision. What I, all I did was I took the, there's two ways that you can charge a fee. You can either use a percentage, like a sales tax, where you say, okay, you're going to charge 2% or 3% or whatever the percentage is, or you can use a per-meter fee. The per-meter fee has some distinct advantages to it in that... The per meter fee has some distinct advantages to it in that people, first of all, it guarantees, if the city is using the fee to raise revenues, it guarantees the revenue. It's not affected by the weather, it's not affected by the cost of gas. If the price goes down, the fee stays the same or up stays the same. From a, from a customer's perspective, it, they, they know exactly what they're going to be paying, and when the weather gets really cold, or when the, when the gas, when the energy prices go up, just because that's what the market is doing, that's the very time that it's probably the most difficult to pay their bill period, and if you use a percentage basis, that even exacerbates the problem. So we prefer the flat fee, but having said that, if you, depending on how you set that flat fee, it can be more burdensome or less burdensome depending on how big you are as a customer. So what I had suggested is that, there's a, Michael, did you give, did, do they have this really difficult thing?
I was just, I should have pointed out in my opening remarks, Mr. Mayor, that if you, there's two sheets that you have for the franchise fee analysis. And if you look at the item number five, the last section of the one sheet of the analysis where it has the monthly fee per customer of $2, are you with me?
Yep.
I should have pointed this out earlier. The residential, under the fee analysis, the residential would change to $2 as opposed to $2.30. Commercial A would be $2.50. Commercial industrial B, $6. Commercial industrial C, $30. Small volume dual fuel A, $50. Small volume dual fuel B, $100. And large volume dual fuel, that's kind of hard to say fast, is $150.
And what?
The one sheet, the one analysis includes the numbers that had appeared in the published ordinance, and these are the suggestions from Mr. Swintek to achieve some more equitability in the system. And I agree with him. I, I think it is a better series of numbers.
All right. Steve, anything else?
Approximately what, do you have a handle on what, what permit fees cost you in the city of Wilmer?
Yes, there, I think they were last year, they were $6,500. Prior to that, it was closer to $10,000. But as I understand it, the, the fee schedule, the permit fee schedule was modified a year or so ago, and, and as a result of those modifications, the, the permit fees actually went down. In addition, it's, of course, driven by how much activity is there, new construction, or, you know, if we have to reinforce our system or do some kind of work, you know, if you've got a lot of work going on, then you pull more permits, less work, less permits. We would, of course, still apply for and take out the permits. So that wouldn't change, just like we do now, that of course wouldn't change. This would just simply be trading the, the $6,500 or whatever that number ends up being for the $250,000, and then the administrative, you know, services provided by that.
It's a, it's a trade-off for your administrative costs.
Yeah.
And it's a suggestion, right?
It's a suggestion. All of these are suggestions. It really is up to the City Council to, to make these policy decisions and...
All right. Councilmember Reese.
Right now, if we, if we do not go through with action here tonight and we consider these six possible changes, then we need to republish and reschedule another hearing. But I would assume that discussion would go back to one of the committees, probably the Finance Committee, I would guess, to consider each one of these possible changes. And I think that would be the, the appropriate move, because I, I do too agree with some, not all. I, I look at, you know, MPs impose fees on both gas and electric. Well, it is a municipal utilities, and the municipal utilities is owned by the public within the city, and franchise fees, in my mind, are utilized and paid by that utility for utilization of the public property, which is the right of way to put their infrastructure within. And being that it's a, that the electric service is owned by the citizens of Wilmer, I have a little difficulty with that as, so, but I, I think it needs to go back to finance and, and then be rescheduled.
Councilmember Anderson?
I've got a number of thoughts. First of all, I, I guess I need to understand, and it hasn't been explained yet, why the proposed rates are better than what we published. I mean, you said you, Mick, you said you agreed, but I don't know what, why are these better? What's the difference?
Can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
If I could, I, I'd like to try to explain that. If you look at the line five in, there, there are two sheets that look almost identical, they're very busy, and I apologize for that. They look almost identical. But if you look at line, the, the line five in both of those sheets, and in particular, if you look at the commercial A category, which is the second line down, the original proposal was a $4.59 per month fee. If, because of the size of that customer class, what the average percentage would be paying, it's like if you paid $4.50, but your whole bill was only $45, you'd be paying 10%, right? If you paid $4.50 and your whole bill was $4 million, you'd be paying a teeny tiny percentage. And so what I'm, what, what this is attempting to do is it's basically attempting to say $2.50 is equivalent to about 2.5% tax burden. $4.59 is equivalent to about a 4.6% tax burden. So that's the, that's in essence what the change is all about. It's trying to say, okay, let's try to put the same kind of tax burden on, 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 on everybody, or at least on the, the customers A, B, C, and, you know, A, B, and C. And then when you get into the large industrial customers, just like you've got different property tax classifications for industrial customers, you're probably going to collect a, you know, different kind of fee schedule for those types of folks. So that's the reason for that change, suggested change.
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
I don't know if I buy that. I'll just comment on some of your other thoughts, and if we want to send this back, so be it. But I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Dockin, imposing the fee on both the gas and electric, that's a non-starter as far as I'm concerned. Franchise fee in lieu of permit fees, I'm not sure even if that is legal, perhaps it is, but I think once you get your process set up and through your computers, that'll be a pretty minimal thing. The problem I see extending the start date, and I can, I can be sympathetic that December 31st or January 1st could be a problem, and I think that our publication says December 31st. So that, to me, could be a problem. The sunset provision is already in the proposal that was presented by the Finance Committee. It was to be dedicated to stormwater situations and including Grass Lake, and then if that, when that was taken care of, it was to come back to the council to see if there was any other public projects out there that, that we would want to apply the, the fee to. So that's already been handled. Paying on a quarterly versus monthly basis, I don't know that, that we need to not vote on it because of that, because I think that's a procedural thing. I don't see that as, as a stumbling block. So I have a lot of concerns and reservations. I guess I'm not totally clear on the changing of the fees, but if it's the desire of the council to send it back to the Finance Committee, we can, we can certainly look at it. Just remember this, this $250,000, we have money in the budget to cover the operations of the city. This $250,000 was going to be dedicated, it was dedicated to stormwater, flooding, and Grass Lake. That's what this was for. The budget, as we went through it, we increased the levy by $250,000 is what we did to take into account this. So we can bring this back to the, to the Finance Committee, but I have a lot of reservations with the proposal.
I would like to point out that when the original budget was proposed, $250,000 was put in there to help balance the operational budget of the city, and later the council increased the tax levy. The mayor didn't increase it, but the council increased it.
Councilmember Gardner, did you have some comment here?
Well, I can always comment, but I hadn't intended on it.
All right, Councilmember Reese.
I think I was grooming myself.
Okay, Councilmember Reese.
On that monthly fee per customer and the fee collected under your number five on the, yeah, I got number, number fives, but the flat, the meter-based flat fee, I look, I look at the charges, and I know in residential we wouldn't have, but maybe in commercial and industrial, I know we have a number of users, you have a number of users, within the city that have multiple meters. So then you're talking about multiple charges. And do you have any idea how, how many businesses, industrial situations we have within the city that do have multiple meters? Because we're raising, if I'm understanding this right, we're raising the, significantly raising the, the rate on the higher users.
Well, normally, the higher users don't have a lot of multiple meters. Really, where you run into multiple meters or multiple accounts is if you have a strip mall or something like that, where you've got, you know, somebody who's got six bays on a building, and eventually they're going to pay, you know, they're going to try to fill those six bays with various customers, and, and then once they fill them, then that, that bill goes to the person, you know, that's leasing that space. Typically, that's what that's all about.
Well, I know we've got our largest industrial business within the city has, and I don't know how many, but they've got multiple meters. And you're going from, I, I don't even know which class they'd fall under.
They maybe fall under several classes, you know, because if they might have one large meter on this building for their processed gas, and then they've got other smaller buildings that if they've got gas meters on them, they would, they would fall into a different category. So they maybe have, you know, each, each meter, depending on how much gas they use at that particular location, would be, would be its own classification. So if you've got a, you know, the school district is a great example. You've got a high school, they've got a big meter, they've got grade schools that have got small meters, they probably have, even if you've got a smaller meter to heat the building, they might have even a smaller meter for the kitchen, multiple meters. But of course, if you used a percentage, it'd be, it'd be, all of that gas would be subject to some sort of a fee. This way, you know, it's more or less just the accounts or the meters that would be subject to the fee.
Is the council ready to do something here? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It appears to me that this discussion is trying to be based on fairness per meter, and, and there's really no way we can be. I mean, we don't know all the, the situations out there with multiple meters or whatever. My take on, I don't like the franchise fee. I'm, I'm against it. I think it's not fair to those that don't have meters. I mean, it's not fair to those that have meters, and, and those that don't have it, they're not going to pay the fee. We can throw numbers all around here and try to be fair to each and every meter, but folks, it's impossible. It's, it's impossible. I'd like to know how the rest of the council feels about the franchise fee itself. I am against it. I don't think we need to go further, personally.
Mick, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make a comment. We shouldn't be too tough on Mr. Swintek, this wasn't his idea. He was gracious enough to provide me with some additional information that I've shared with the council. I don't think it's Al's idea of franchise fees for the benefit of the communities, and he's doing all of this on behalf of the city. I mean, you know, it's a large organization, and as he mentioned, there are a number of other communities throughout the state. So he's, he's simply offering suggestions as to how we might improve on the ordinance that we've prepared up to this point.
Thank you, Mick. Councilmember Gittablik?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a procedural question, maybe Mr. Schmidt can answer with the, if we were to hold another hearing with a, a different fee schedule, is that possibly be published and held at the next council meeting?
Well, not if it's referred back to committee. If you made some decisions about some of these issues that have been brought forth tonight, it could, it could be published and a hearing held on the 3rd. If it's referred back to finance, I'm assuming then you would talk about it on Monday night and decide which, if any, of these tracks you wanted to pursue. And at that point, I guess we would publish it and a hearing would be held on December, what's the second meeting?
17th.
17th.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, at, at this point, I'm not sure it matters. If, if they can't be prepared reasonably to start collecting it until sometime maybe April, you know, maybe we have until January to flush this out, and then they would still have a few months' worth of time to, to get prepared and notify the customers and all that sort of thing.
Well, I think most ordinances of this nature probably call for implementation within 60 days or so. One of the reasons, and maybe Center Point Energy can't gear up that fast, I'm, I'm not so sure that's the case, but I think one, one of the reasons for April 1 was it, it falls on the start of a quarter. It makes it a lot more easier administratively for all parties.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question now. And as it regards the sunset provision that we talked about in, in Finance, I mean, it's understood that that's what we, you know, that, that we have a specific purpose for it and that a future council would come back to, it's not really a sunset, but it'd be up for reconsideration at some point in time for a future council. Is that an item that would, that needs to be in this, or is it something that any future council can simply take up at any time anyway?
Well, the only, the, the big difference here is that it, that language is not included in the... in the proposed ordinance, and we, a city council five or 10 years from now does not necessarily have to be beholden to what this group decides. If you put it in, to put the language in the ordinance, then it's there and they have to deal with it. If there's a sunset provision in there, or if there's a review provision in there, they're mandated then to follow through with that.
That's the word I was looking for, was review rather than sunset. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just remember, we voted on the franchise fee in September as a body. It wasn't unanimous, but included in there were all these stipulations, what it was going to be used for, and the fact that it would go back to the city council if there were no more public uses. So I mean, it's, it's, it's in our minutes, that's what, what this was all about. So I, and I'm clear that it, that was the intent. And that certainly was the intent of the Finance Committee. I can speak to them about that.
I think the council needs to come to a decision here, and, and I'd like to ask if anybody would like to make a motion.
Just in the interest of clarifying things, I, I knew we'd send this back to the Finance Committee.
Second. There's a motion and a second to send this back to the Finance Committee. For what purpose, Dennis?
To clarify the, the rates and all of the other things, and if we didn't properly notice this thing as far as the intent, the sunset provision and all of that, I want, I want it to be done and done correctly.
All right, any other comment about that? That's a motion, and it's been seconded. Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Roll call. Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
No.
Fagerly?
No.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays. The motion carries, the matter will be sent back to the Finance Committee for further review. Thank you, Mr. Swintek.
Thank you.
Safe travels. We are now down to the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. This is the opportunity for any citizen to address the council. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to address the council on any item? Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to distribute something for you.
Mayor and council members, at, at previous Public Works meetings and council meetings, there's been some discussion about the water issue citywide, and what I've handed out to you tonight is some information that, that deals with water gardens and some information that's going on in the city of Burnsville and also the city of Maplewood that, in my estimation, my opinion, has a pretty positive impact of, of using these types of things. And I know at the, at the previous council meeting that we had, there was some information about the, the use of public funds at, at the 10th and Candy Oi intersection, and you can read this at your leisure, but I'd like to direct you to page eight and nine in this particular handout. Page eight shows a picture of the intersection with the property on it. Page nine shows that same property in a crude, hodge, hodge rearranged, digitalized picture of a, of a water garden on that particular location. I think there's probably a whole lot of folks that have had some misconceptions about the use of those types of facilities and, and what they do to a neighborhood and that type of thing. And I hope this document may give you some information about what some of the other communities are, are, are doing with these types of activities, and I think they have, have some good value to them. The last thing that I have for you in that particular handout is, is a page out of the League of Minnesota Cities document that deals with public purpose expenditure, funds, that type of thing. And it's a chart that, that is in the last page of that document, and it's a checklist that, that they typically advocate using to determine whether or not public funds are being used appropriately. And I, and I offer that for your information in use. Five, four simple questions on there, and that's what I have to talk to you about tonight, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council tonight? All right, then we'll move on to number, oh, there you are.
I saw lots of names on the sheet, I wasn't sure if I was the only one.
Please introduce yourself.
Sorry, I'm Brian Gazalka.
Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. I have been a State Farm Insurance agent in town here for 15 years, and I have a little problem. When I moved to town 16 years ago, I bought a house on Highway 12, East Highway 12, and worked with the city to recon, or to convert it with zoning into an office, and that has worked great for a long time. But then I found a house on 19th Avenue Southwest, and I said, this would be perfect as an office location. It just had a nice little sunny living room and hardwood floors, it was just perfect for my small little insurance agency. And not wanting to wait too long, but being the savvy investor that I am, I hope, I went to the city zoning people and talked to Megan Sauer, and I said, okay, what are the chances if I buy this that I can use this as an office? And she said, well, I can't make any guarantees, of course, because it has to go through the whole rezoning process. But she indicated, she showed a nice map on the wall of how all of 19th Avenue is rapidly becoming light, limited business and all that sort of thing. And we visited about it at length, and she said, you know, no guarantees, but it shouldn't be a big problem. We just have to work through the process, work through the whole thing, and see how it turns out. And so I purchased the property, and then after one short meeting, however, when two neighbors complained, it was a quick no, and the process was at an end. And I thought, whoa, what's the story here? So I had a good visit with Bruce Peterson, and he was very helpful, but basically explained that even though all of 19th is slowly becoming light business, and my business is exactly, as a small State Farm Insurance office, exactly the kind of business the city wants on 19th Avenue, that, and that it would be a good buffer between the busy traffic pattern and the residents and all this sort of thing. At this time, they weren't ready or willing to do anything because they don't have any big plan in place. So my thought is, and, so I was real, kind of frustrated at that, and I said, well, if I had been told that upfront, that, well, yeah, because then the final thing was, he said, we never do spot rezoning, we just simply don't. And I thought, well, if they had told me that upfront, I wouldn't have purchased the property, because, you know, I was seeking information, being new at the process, trying to figure out how to do this, and it just feels rather unfair that after one quick meeting, when I have actually about half a dozen neighbors have come since and said, we think it'd be a great buffer, it'd be a great addition to the neighborhood. So I'm just asking for a good way and a lot of wisdom for how to work through this process in a way that is win-win, because I think it's a bunch of, we have a bunch of good people trying to do what's right for the city, and I just, I'm trying to figure out how to do this where we can all work this thing out and I can figure out how to move forward. I don't know if that means a comprehensive plan for 19th Avenue, or if that just means a little miracle to have my property spot rezoned so I can use it as an office, as I did on Highway 12. Any miracles tonight?
Well, tonight is your chance to tell the council what's on your mind, and we don't normally make a decision right here, but
I understand.
The council can refer you to a committee or to an individual who might begin this process that you're asking for review. Have you taken the option of going back to either Mr. Peterson, Mr. Schmidt, or the Planning Commission with your concerns?
Yeah, I visited with Megan, and she said they pretty much never, you know, no one ever, you know, kind of comes back at it again. And so then I talked to Mr. Peterson, and he was helpful, and he said, well, you know, he gave me some ideas, but basically he said, it's, it fits perfectly with our long-term plan, but we're just not in a point, not at a point where we can do anything about it at this time. And so I thought, well, elected officials, how can you give me some wisdom here?
Well, I guess I, I would say, why don't you start, make an appointment to go see Mr. Schmidt?
Excellent.
That's the first step, and he'll listen to you, I guarantee he'll listen to you, and then he'll sort out with you what your options are, you know, what are good and what are not so good options, but start with him, okay?
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Brian, just for a point of information, what is the address of the
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is the address of the home that you
It's 1904 7th Street Southwest. So it has a garage and an entrance on 19th Avenue, and it also has quite a bit of on-street parking right on 7th Street itself.
Is this on the west side of 7th or
Correct, it's on the west side of 7th and the south side of 19th. And I worked through the parking, parking issues and all those things with Megan Sauer, who was very helpful, so.
Okay, so, okay, south of 19th Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'll drive by it multiple times, I'm sure. Thank you.
Anyone else tonight, and you'll call Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here tonight wants to speak to the council? Hello, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, Council, my name is Laura Becker. I live at 1010 Candy Ohi Avenue Southwest. I'm just here again tonight to follow up with the council, basically in regards to the flood damage that was done in August, in regards to what is being done, what are the results of what you're finding, and then what kind of timetable can we as neighbors expect from you, the council?
I, I can speak to the fact that the council asked the staff to meet with the school board to get permission to further study this, and then that step was taken, and the next step was to acquire soil borings on various sites to see whether or not they were adequate to consider detention ponds, and that is still in process. I think some of the soil borings have been done, and, but not all, and we are expecting a report back after the soil borings are completed. I'm, I think that'll come back to the Public Works Committee with their findings. Is that right, Mel? That's the direction we're going to go? Okay, so that's still in process, it'll come back to Public Works, and then from Public Works Committee it'll come back to the city council.
And what timeframe would that be?
I'm not sure on the timeframe. I know that some of these borings have taken place already, but I don't know that all of them are completed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're, we're, I think I, I've stated publicly here in the last week or so that preliminarily the Kennedy School proposed detention area wasn't working out because of soil conditions, but that Garfield was, and that it's always been our intent since this discussion of storm water detention areas started to include whatever we could in our 2008 improvement program.
So tonight, that's, that's the best we can say tonight.
Okay, so then follow up with another Public Works meeting, is that right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else? All right, we will now move on. Number nine. Glenn, come on up here. Glenn, we made you struggle right up to the end, didn't we?
That's normal.
I heard some bad news. I heard you were retiring. Is that correct?
It's history.
It's history. You already did it, huh?
I did, October 12th.
October 12th. Well, Glenn, I've got a few words to say here, and I'll give you the opportunity when I'm done, if you want to say something, but let me just begin, before I make the formal thing here. My gosh, Glenn, you've been working for the city, what is it, 34 years?
That's correct.
Five months and 12 days. That's incredible. Incredible amount of public service to the city of Wilmer. And Glenn, I know you've seen it all. You've worked yourself up through the community, through the ranks of the police department to a position of respect and to a position of, of, everybody knows you, and they respect who you are and what you do and how you do it. And formally, let me read this to you, and then maybe council, some council members may wish to make some comments, too. So Sergeant Glenn Nagin retired from the Wilmer Police Department October 12th, 2007, after 34 years, five months, and 12 days of service to the citizens of Wilmer. Glenn was born and raised in the Blumkis Faya area, and he graduated from Wilmer High School. He served in the United States Navy from 1965 to 1969. He attended the Wilmer Area Vocational Technical Institute from 1970 to 1972, receiving a degree in mobile communications. Glenn started his law enforcement career on May 1st, 1973, when he was hired as a police officer by the city of Wilmer. He was promoted to sergeant in 1986. Along with his duties as a patrol supervisor, Glenn was a department use-of-force instructor, firearms instructor, emergency response team leader, and emergency response team incident commander. Glenn was instrumental in forming, in the forming of the Wilmer Police Department Emergency Response Team Unit in 1988. He coordinated the unit's training until his recent retirement. Throughout his law enforcement career, Glenn received many letters of recommendation, commendation, and recognition by the department and by professional associations. In 2003, the Association of Training Officers of Minnesota elected Glenn to the Law Enforcement Instructor Hall of Fame. In 2005, Glenn received the Medal of Honor from the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association for his involvement in a shooting incident in Wilmer. And I had the privilege of being with Glenn and his family up in St. Cloud the night that he received that award. Our own police chief, Jim Cullset, was the chairperson or the president of the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association that year. Glenn is very active in the martial arts. He holds an eighth-degree black belt in judo and jujitsu, and there are very few people at this level of proficiency in the nation. In 2001, he was recognized by the Martial Arts Association Hall of Fame as the Law Enforcement Instructor of the Year. Glenn and his wife Barb live in Wilmer and have seven grown children. He continues to be active in martial arts and public safety training. Glenn, we're going to miss you as a full-time police officer in our department. We know you're not leaving, at least not yet, and we know that you have many areas that you're going to stay involved in. One of the, one of the best comments I've heard about you came from a law enforcement student who had participated in some of your training. And I said, what'd you think of Sergeant Nagin? And he said, he's a walking weapon. He's a walking weapon. I think, you know, Glenn, you've always given off this presence that you're just kind of a grandfather-type of person who knows everybody, everybody knows you, but he's always extremely trained and then always at the ready, always at the ready. And I think your training is well-known, probably better known outside of Wilmer than it is inside of Wilmer. I think you're recognized nationally, and I heard that you were involved in some Olympic training also, is that correct? Was that part of your background, or I'd heard that
I've had some students that went to the Olympic Training Center and were invited to come and train, expenses paid.
That's what I heard. Congratulations on that. But tonight, we're here to recognize Glenn and to thank him publicly for all of his years of, of serving the city of Wilmer and the many hundreds and hundreds of students and officers that he's helped to train. And his, his character and his sense of duty is unparalleled. So Glenn, thank you very much for all you've done for the city of Wilmer. We very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Glenn, we have a present here from the city of Wilmer. It's just a token of appreciation, but we'd like you to accept it as, as our way of saying thanks to you publicly. Thanks a whole bunch. Glenn?
You got to go down the road.
Thank you very much.
Glenn? Thanks a whole bunch. Glenn, you gotta go down the road.
Thank you very much.
Glenn, congratulations. Gonna miss your smile. Glenn, would you like to offer any comments?
Couple. City of Wilmer was a great place to work. I always look forward to going to work every day and a couple of times I've turned the scanner on just to listen. I miss the guys, but I don't miss the problems. And I will be around. I plan to stay active in training, uh, use-of-force training and terrorism and to do a little part-time work in Wilmer. So I plan to be around. And I'd like to say, thank my wife Barb. And all my kids are gone right now, but, uh, you know, the times of working nights or working weekends and holidays, et cetera, uh, I won't miss those either. But thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Godspeed. Barb, thank you very much for joining us tonight too. Uh, next, we have a presentation to the, uh, members of the city council and the mayor from the YMCA Youth and Government. And, uh, Brian Theory is gonna start this. Welcome, Brian, and I asked if you would introduce everybody who's with you.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am Brian Theory and I am the delegation director for Candy Ojai County, um, Youth and Government Program. And I think what I'm going to do is first introduce, uh, my, uh, my partner Troy Peterson, who is assistant to, uh, the delegation and, uh, he helps me run, uh, the Youth and Government Program. He is, uh, his job title is the program coordinator, uh, program director at the Candy Ojai County YMCA, so...
Troy, why don't you stand over here next so we get you on the camera, okay? Next to Brian or behind him or something.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank you as well for being here tonight. It's definitely a opportunity for me to come and see how, how things are run here in the city of Wilmer. I actually graduated from Wilmer here too, but actually my first time here at the city council meeting, so thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you, Troy.
I think what I will do is have each of, uh, the participants who are attending tonight come up to the podium here and, uh, introduce themselves, so, starting with you, Cooper.
I am Cooper Willis. I am a ninth grader here at the senior high and this is my second year doing youth and government, and I'm going to be starting in the legislative branch this year.
What does that mean, Cooper?
That means I get to make the laws and help pass them.
Oh, okay, is this like a simulation kind of thing?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
I'm Mason Marshall and I'm in eighth grade. I'm from New London Spicer Middle School. It's my first year in youth and government, so I'm in leadership corps.
Good, well, welcome, Mason, and glad you're involved in this. Have you had several meetings already or are you just getting started?
I'm just getting started.
Just getting started, good. We'll stick with it.
Um, hi, my name's Robert Brow and I'm a ninth grader and I go to senior high and I'm also in the legislature.
Good. When do you, uh, when do your meetings start, Robert?
Um, pretty soon.
Everyone has attended, um, well, most everyone has attended a regional district training, uh, that was held in Elk River, uh, on the 10th of November. And, uh, from there on out, uh, we do, uh, we get together and experience meetings like this. This is not only informational, uh, for the students, but also informative to see, um, how a council meeting is run. So this is actually one of the meetings. We don't really call it a meeting, it's more of a, um, uh, production, uh, so they can be in the spotlight, we can advertise the program since it's held out of the YMCA. And, uh, I will, uh, give you an overview of the youth and government program after Robert's done. So.
Anybody have any questions for the three fellows here? Anybody want to ask him anything? Just stay with it, stay involved with it and, uh, it's, there's a crossover between what you experience in meetings like this with what you'll probably experience in school. You know, if you're getting involved in your city, or your student council or other groups in school, there's a crossover in how business is done, motions are made, votes are taken. It applies to a lot of different settings, so we're glad you're involved.
Thank you, guys. And, uh, also, uh, I wanted to, uh, introduce a fourth, uh, member of the youth and government program who is unable to attend tonight. Her name is Kayden Whitman and she is at a National Honors Society banquet tonight, so that's why she's unable to, uh, attend. Like I said, we do have, uh, four, uh, participants in this year's, uh, program and, uh, sorry about that. And, uh, so basically, youth and government, I'm going to use the acronym YIG to, uh, to just, uh, brief things up for you guys. YIG is a program that's offered to, uh, youth, uh, in grades eight through 12, and, uh, the registration starts in September and then goes all the way through the model assembly portion of the program in January. And, uh, that's held, that's kind of the grand finale. It's held, uh, January 10th through the 13th and, uh, we get, uh, fourteen hundred kids, kind of in one hotel, believe it or not, and, uh, we, uh, we get, um, the state Capitol in St. Paul lets us use the, um, use the meeting rooms, we get to use the house floors, the chambers, everything is kind of let go for these guys to run their bill passing type of, uh, bill typing or bill passing, bill presenting type of events. Like I said, youth and government has, uh, fourteen hundred youth involved in the state. It was started in Minnesota in, uh, 1946 and, uh, like you were saying, Mr. Mayor, it is a, uh, program that simulates and models, um, the legislate, the legislature, everything from, um, we have, um, we, we have, uh, a governor and all, all the way down to legislature, things like that. The younger kids are in leadership's corps where they get to learn, uh, learn the lingo of, uh, of all of, uh, well, just, just the lingo like you guys use. Uh, Robert's Rule, things like that. Um, it's also modeling the court system. Uh, we have a supreme, Supreme Court, we have Supreme Court justices, and, uh, we have everything down to, um, attorneys. Uh, there's also a media portion of, of the, uh, event. And so we have newspaper columnists, we have, uh, a radio station, the, uh, um, the Hilton where we stay at has all sorts of, um, um, media and reporters that go around and they actually broadcast a night, like, a nightly news session. And, um, basically what it, what the focus of YIG is, is it's promoting leadership skills amongst the youth. It provides an understanding of government and, uh, in all branches, local, uh, state and federal levels, and an exploration in careers, um, or potential careers in public service, just like, uh, Mr. Officer Glenn Nagin. So we're, uh, trying to expose these, these youngsters to, um, to everything involving government, all, uh, all the different facets of it, and, uh, we try and do that through the YMCA. So thank you for your time and, uh, I yield.
Okay. Well, again, thanks for coming in tonight and, uh, I know you sat here for a long time, but, uh, that's part of the process. Sometimes when meetings go fast, sometimes they go slow. Sometimes there, you know, there's discussion where you don't expect it and other times there's no discussion, even if you thought there was gonna be discussion. So, uh, that's what the governmental process is like. It's not always smooth, but, uh, things get done. So, uh, best of luck with your involvement and, again, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you guys want to pick up and leave, that's up to you guys. All right, thanks very much. Next on the agenda is number 11. Uh, that's the presentation to the council and to the mayor from the Housing Task Force. And, uh, I know I had talked to Mr. Bjornson ahead of time and said that they wouldn't have to wait very long, but an hour and 45 minutes is a little bit longer than I thought, but, uh, I'd like to welcome the mayor's Housing Task Force. And John and Jolene, do you want to come up and, uh, give your report? Jolene Hovland and John Bjornson were elected by the members of the Housing Task Force to be the co-chair people, uh, and, uh, I'll turn it over to you two.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm John Bjornson, this is Jolene Hovland, and, um, we'd like to thank the task force members for their time and talents and also thank the mayor and Bruce Peterson for, um, their participation. They helped keep us focused, they helped, uh, keep our meetings on track. Uh, Bruce also served as our, um, our secretary, he kept our minutes and he handled all our mailings to keep our activities cohesive. I don't know if you guys have a copy of our recommendations with you, but I know that our minutes and our recommendations, uh, are available to you and, uh, I'm sure will be, uh, will be presented to you. Uh, we, um, dealt with four main areas, exterior maintenance, the exterior maintenance ordinances, the zoning ordinances, municipal code, and the rental housing ordinances. Each of these we dealt with in a limited scope. We were concerned mainly with exterior conditions and exterior ma- maintenance of, of properties. Um, the main intent of the task force was to, um, maintain and preserve neighborhoods in a manner that citizens that are, that a, a citizen would generally expect, that a reasonable and prudent citizen would want to, to see and to live in. We, um, really found the ordinances in pretty good shape. Some of them were a little out of date and some of them needed a little changing. Um, and there are some new practices that the city hadn't faced, so in some instances we, we added, uh, some regulation. But generally, our changes were relatively small and, um, are available to the council for your future review and action if you decide to take any. Two themes that were present in most of our discussions were the education of citizens when they become homeowners or tenants, the education of landlords to be landlords, and the enforcement and follow-through when we do have ordinance violations, especially maintenance violations and other violations that have to do with, um, noise and general behavior and conduct within the community. We felt that it would be important to recommend that the council establish a staff position in whatever form they thought this position would take, and the person in this position would have the responsibility to implement and enforce the recommendations and the general codes themselves. And we also felt that it was beyond the scope of our task force to deal with issues relating to landlords and their presentation of properties on the market with regard to interior condition. Uh, with that, um, I, I don't know that it's necessary to go through each and every recommended change because each of you will have an opportunity to review and discuss those again at a future date. And I guess I would ask Jolene if she has anything to add or any comments that she would like to make.
Mr. Mayor, city council, um, John and I discussed all this previously and I think he covered it pretty well. We're hoping that you will go forth with these recommendations and, um, you will find more discussion about this in the minutes of each meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, John and Jolene. Uh, council members, do you have any, uh, questions or comments about this Housing Task Force? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you two folks and your, your committee. I know there were a number of meetings and, and you really did some, some good work. I'm gonna talk and ask a little bit more on this enforcement thing. You, you're proposing perhaps a position be established. Do you view this as a person that's, that's out in the community looking for violations or are we gonna continue with more on the line of when violations are brought to our attention, this person would deal with them? Or how, how is this enforcement going to actually transpire?
Well, one, one of the problems that came up in a consistent manner was, for instance, a, a problem with a barking dog or a noisy party. And oftentimes, people that had made these complaints, uh, I have no firsthand knowledge of any of this, but this was within our discussion, would feel that nothing really was done and that, uh, if, uh, if a person is, uh, gets a call and they have a barking dog, what happens after that? No, no one really knows. And so we thought that the role would take on both of those aspects. Uh, most of the problems with our city ordinances and codes are driven by complaint, by citizen complaint, but there are obviously other problems that, uh, are easily seen and comprehended by anyone that's, that's, uh, that's going through the city and, and looking. So we thought that whatever way that this staff person could find to implement and, uh, the educational and enforcement aspects of this would be probably an evolving structure, but both of the elements that you mentioned were discussed. Well, thanks again for your work.
I'd like to add something to that.
Anyone else? Uh, councilmember Swenson?
Yes, I'd like to thank you two as well for leading the meetings. You did a great job keeping it orderly. Um, also, I'd like to thank all the members that served on it. A lot of good suggestions came out of our meetings and both negative comments and positive were very appreciated. In response to your comments, John, just now, and I'd like to just say it so everyone can hear, the complaint basis system works sometimes, but it seemed to be, there were a few people who represent others, I'm sure, um, who complained and didn't feel heard or see anything happen, and then they tend to drop off. So, um, I, I just want to say that the complaint system works if people continue that complaint, their complaints.
I'd like to just mention who were the members of the committee because this was a volunteer committee. We asked the citizens to review all the ordinances related to, um, this issue and make their recommendations, and these were the members of the committee. Uh, Suzie Martinez, Shirley Jensen, Steve Ammon, thanks Steve for coming tonight, Shelley Cash, Harold McAdams, Trudy McAdams, Luz Jimenez, councilmember Cindy Swenson, councilmember Jim Dokken, councilmember Steve Gardner, Fred Codjolo, Eileen Huberty, Kevin Marty, Ivan Sordahl, Rebecca Trongard, Maria Diaz, John or Johnny Lindgren, Sharon Mace. Did I miss anybody? I think that's all the members that were on the official roster. I think I called everybody. And then Bruce Peterson was the assigned staff person that did all the notification, attendance, minute-taking and advising to the committee. And then John and, and Jolene served as the chairpeople. Again, you know, this got started because it came out of the city council retreat, uh, last winter that, uh, council members felt that there was a need to review our housing ordinances based on complaints from citizens about how some of the houses and neighborhoods, uh, were beginning to, to deteriorate. So what I'd like to suggest is that this report, uh, be submitted, you know, which it is now tonight, to the council. to suggest is that this report be submitted, you know, which it is now tonight, to the council, and then be referred to the appropriate committee. And I would guess that that is the Community Development Committee for further review, and then discussion and possible changes in some of our ordinances. And that was the intent of the committee, was to study it, chew on it, come back with ideas and suggestions, and help the council look at the current ordinances to see if they needed to be fine-tuned or changed. So, a job well done. Thank you. We had told you that the committee would not last more than a few months. I think it went about four months, maybe a little five months, I'm not sure. But thanks to all the committee members for your time and effort, and it's a job well done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
And council, if you don't mind, will refer to Community Development?
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to refer this report to Community Development. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, we'll move on then. The next item is the Public Works Safety Committee report for November 13th. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda was in regards to the signal system at Nineteenth Avenue and Fifth Street southeast, and it involves a change order, change order number three with Shorty Elliott Hendrickson, who is a consulting engineers for the project. The change order is a result of wet soil conditions that affected the signal standard at the southwest corner of the intersection. During construction, a field tile was found, and it was rerouted into our storm sewer. The water was then pumped out, and the ground compacted prior to the installation of the mast arm for the signal system. It turned out the soil was saturated enough that over time, the mast arm pole was leaning to, leaning after the compaction was done. The contractor used their equipment to pull the mast arm back into place and dug up around the foundation and recompacted the ground. And a month later, it was leaning. After further review and analysis, Shorty Elliott Hendrickson and the city both decided it was necessary to have the contractor, Granite Ledge Electric, complete additional work to ensure that its foundation was properly supported. To do so, the contractor was required to excavate around the entire foundation approximately six feet below the ground line and install concrete around the foundation with some rebar to provide additional strength. The cost to do this was $4,600. The contractors agreed to split the cost with the city. Since the completion date will be affected by the agreement, the contract date shall be extended to December 15th. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to extend the completion date to December 15th, 2007, approve change order number three in the amount of $2,300, and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to approve change order number three in the amount of $2,300, and to extend the completion date for this project to December 15th. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
In regard to that same project, we received a letter from Shorty Elliott Hendrickson, and where they have reached the maximum contract amount of $18,200 for their services on the design and construction of that traffic signal. And under the circumstances, the contract amount should be exceeded, or was, will be exceeded to cover various circumstances on the remaining project, work on the project. And Shorty Elliott Hendrickson would like the city to consider increasing their contract by $3,000 to account for additional site visits and issues related to the location of the signal pole, and review construction issues for modifications in the placement of the concrete foundation. So, Mr. Mayor, I would also introduce a resolution to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement for Project 0705, increasing the not-to-exceed figure to $21,200, and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to agreeing for Project 0705 to increase their financial amount to not to exceed $21,200, and authorize our city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Aye. Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would also introduce a resolution that would modify the budget to reflect these changes for the modification of the foundation of the mast arm, and also SEH is part in the, and there is also money in the budget to cover these additional costs. So, I would introduce a resolution to revise the budget accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to revise the budget accordingly. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Aye. Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next item was in regards to the new T-hanger at the airport and a financing agreement, which was presented by staff to the committee. And the agreement is with the state of Minnesota for financing and repayment of the airport's 12-unit T-hanger. The agreement is an 80-20 cost-share split and an interest-free loan for 10 years. And the total financing costs will not exceed $350,983, and the city will repay the state 120 monthly installments, and they will be funded mostly from lease agreements for the hangars. So, Mr. Mayor, there's two resolutions. The first is to accept the agreement with the state of Minnesota to finance the airport T-hanger, and, yeah, that's, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the agreement with the state of Minnesota to finance the airport T-hangers. Further comment? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to understand, is the $350,983, that's the city's, that's 20% of the total, including interest expenses and all that sort of thing?
Yes, the way I understood it. Mick, is that correct?
The $350,000 is the total amount of the loan.
Yes. That's the city's portion, right? It's an 80-20 split? It's an 80-20 split, but that's, I understood that to be the city's portion. No? That's a total?
Total.
That's a total. All right. So, the city's portion is 20% of that number? About $70,000? And we're going to take 120 months to pay off $70,000? That doesn't sound right.
No, 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 no.
I think this is the city's portion right here.
No.
No, no, no. It's the cost of the hangar. It was even valued at more than that.
Well, how many hangars are there? Aren't there like 14?
There's 12.
There's 12.
It's a 12-unit T-hanger. I'll have to check those numbers, Mr. Mayor.
The states, we have to, it's a state revolving hangar loan fund, and the state's portion is $280,000.
Yeah, that should be in ours.
And the balance is ours, but it, they loan the city the money, and the city pays the state back, the $280,000.
Okay. So, the city's portion is about $70,000?
Correct. That's a matching dollar amount. That's, and that's the eligible cost. I think that if you go back and look at the budget, if you're confused, the budget amount's $580,000, because there's some uneligible costs that don't apply to the state hanging revolving loan fund.
Okay. But it still takes us 120 payments to pay off $70,000?
That's not unusual.
Is it?
Since we're going to be using rental fees to help pay for it, because it's, you know.
Okay. My question was, does this put us in that position where we are obligated in the future then to pay back the state because the state is helping us build this project?
You mean like we are in the old airport?
On the old airport.
I don't think you and I are going to have to worry about that.
Good point. But I mean, that's what, that's what happens, right? We get into these agreements, and it means long-term obligations and...
I believe this obligation is for a 12-unit T-hanger with an annual revenue in somewhere around $26,000, $27,000 a year.
Okay. Well, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comment about this? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then, in dealing with the same 12-unit T-hanger, there was a change order number one that was prepared by Shorty Elliott Hendrickson. And some of the changes are lighted exit signs, alternative material for curbs for fuel containment, and some of the changes resulted in building fire code requirements changes. And the completion date was also requested to be extended by 15 days to November 30th. And the cost for these items results in a deduct to the contract of $7,592.53. So, I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the items under change order number one to the contract for the T-hanger with Brightbach Construction, and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the items of change order number one with Brightbach Construction. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then, in dealing with the same 12-unit T-hanger, there was a change order number one that was prepared by Shorty Elliott Hendrickson. And some of the changes are lighted exit signs, alternative material for curbs for fuel containment, and some of the changes resulted in a building fire code requirements changes. And the completion date was also requested to be extended by 15 days to November 30th. And the cost for these items results in a deduct to the contract of $7,592.53. So, I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the items under change order number one to the contract for the T-hanger with Brightbach Construction, and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the items of change order number one with Brightbach Construction. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then, we reviewed a letter with staff from BAR Engineering, where they responded to our request to, and the fact that we wanted to retain their services for periodic consulting services. The scope of the services include plan review of new development, submittals, storm-water modeling, and providing consultations and recommendations for a not-to-exceed figure of $10,000. This is a one-year interim contract, and would be funded by transferring money from personnel services to professional services. So, I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the agreement for engineering services with BAR Engineering on a not-to-exceed $10,000, and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the interim agreement for engineering services with BAR Engineering not to exceed $10,000. Comment? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tell me about what the plan review will tell us, new developments, submittals, storm-water modeling, and what are we going to get for this $10,000?
Councilmember Dawkins, members of the council, we would use this when we get new plans in, similar to the discussion that we had earlier tonight. We would be able to expedite that process by, when the complete plans are received by the city, we would be able to send them on to BAR for review to see if they adhere to all the requirements of the city.
So, this is good for, this is a one-year interim contract. So, when are we going to get information from them then? When can we expect information from them?
Well, within 45 days would be, what I guess, the ordinance allows 45-day review for the storm-water ordinance. And I would anticipate within two weeks after them getting the plans, we would have an answer back.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call?
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Project 0715 is the Phase 2 of our interceptor line to the new wastewater treatment plant. And as we all know, that construction was started in October. And the contractor, Chad Munson Excavating of Wilmer, was working on the project, and they found that some of the trench materials to be used for backfill in the parking lot were too wet, and they couldn't get them stabilized to use them for backfill, and patching the mall's parking lot. And they were directed to bring in additional aggregate materials, and then also use some geotextile fabric. And there's an additional cost to the contract price. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept change order number one in the amount of $41,131 for Project 0715 to be funded within the project budget.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to accept change order number one in the amount of $41,131 for Project Number 0715.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, some of you on the council, some of the council members and staff would have received a letter today challenging some of the action that we're proposing to take here, or even just some of the actions that were taken on the job. And I guess if you've read the letter, you will have questions in your mind that you probably want answered before you vote on this. So, Craig, can I call on you to maybe address some of that?
Yes, sir. The soils that were used to backfill this utility trench were the same soils that were removed initially to build it. In other words, we dug the trench, we laid the pipe, and we put that material back. Approximately four feet of that material, at least on the southern third of the project, was not even suitable for backfill, so most of that has been removed from the site altogether. But the material that's in question was discovered that when it had been removed and reinstalled, we found that we could not compact that material suitably to reconstruct the mall's parking lot for over the winter use as we... for over the winter use, as we had promised that they would, before street construction perhaps follows next year. So in order to put that back together and get the lot back open in time for the coming shopping season, we ordered this additional work to be done, which included four components. Two of those four were an increase in the estimated quantities that were within the original bid. And then there were two items of additional work ordered to help further stabilize that so the asphalt patch in the parking lot would be stable. This is not a function of wet weather. I think the job began after a period of some rain. It actually started with a couple of days of rain, and it really doesn't relate to that whatsoever. It is a function of how wet that soil is. It's soil that the last glacier laid down. It's an area that's nearby to ditch 23A, and it's soil that is wet and is always gonna be wet. And essentially, what we've done is we've put the parking lot patch back on top of this material so that it's stable.
And the materials, I assume, that were replaced in there, we may have had to do anyway when we do Fifth Street.
Yes, sir. I believe it's safe to assume that when Fifth Street is constructed through there, there will be need for some similar work. I know there's several utilities that will be constructed through there. And in order to establish that as a full-service, full-season roadway to carry that type of traffic load, there'll be similar improvements required when the street is extended.
So what we put in there is something that will be utilized not only just for the pipe or the parking lot, but for Fifth Street in the future.
That is correct.
Other comments? Or where are we here, Doug? Here we may...
Yeah, we've got a resolution, I believe.
Has it been seconded, Kevin?
Yes.
It has? Other comments from councilmembers about this? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too received this letter from a local contractor, and I have some questions. Could you explain to me, Craig, the, paying the contractor $50,000 for de-watering that wasn't done in conformance with the project specifications, their contention of that?
Mr. Mayor, there's two letters in, or two issues in the letter from Mr. Quam today. One deals specifically with the change order of $41,000 in the Public Works. And the other deals, as Mr. Christiansen just stated, with the cost of a de-watering issue. I just received this letter at 3:00 this afternoon as well. I spent a better part of the remaining day visiting with Donahue and Associates with regard to the change order and would recommend that the council follow through with the Public Works Committee's recommendation. But the issue of the de-watering, I have really not had time to investigate at all and would like to suggest that we do that and come prepared to visit with the committee at its next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, he's got several items in here that have to do with that $41,000 change order, saying that the contractor should have been responsible for it because it was incidental to his work that he was doing. And you're saying it's not? We hauled the fill out because it wouldn't compact to meet the grade of road that we wanted?
Councilmember Christiansen, it's a matter of administering the contract as it's written. I submit that regardless of who was awarded, which firm was awarded that construction contract, the end result in removing and reinstalling that material would have been essentially the same. When we prepare these construction contracts, the contracts are written in such a way that the risks are equitably shared between us, the owner, and the contractor that's constructing it. So I don't believe there was sufficient information available at the time for any bidder to have known for preparation of its bid that this type of stabilization work would have been required for a stable patch, even a short-term stable patch over the winter months for the mall parking lot. So it was our opinion that the change is justified and the additional payment is warranted.
The, as I recall, there were two other bidders on this particular portion. They're claiming that they assumed that they had to be responsible for any material that would go below that, whether it was replaced or not. And because of the cost of it, I mean, it brings their bids a little closer. And I understand their concern, but I also have a lot of faith in you.
Any other comments on this first, or the motion that's been presented here? If not, are you ready to vote on this? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
The resolution passes.
Now, the first part of the interceptor that we put in was Project 0609. And S.J. Lewis Construction was the contractor. And that has been completed. And final quantities have been determined. There were modifications that resulted in various changes to quantities. And Donahue and Associates has prepared a change order, change order number two, that reflects these changes. The contractor did not have to move as much dirt. An additional pipe was installed on 28th Avenue Southwest, which was 54 feet on the Home Depot property. And then a large culvert did not need to be replaced, resulting in a net deduct of $49,160. So I would introduce a resolution to accept change order number two for a net deduct of $29,160 for Project 0609.
Which one is it, 49 or 29?
29.
It's $29,160.
I didn't even see that, Ron. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cindy? All right. We have a motion and a second for this resolution, which accepts change order number two with a net deduct of $29,160 for Project Number 0609. Further comment about this? I'd like to hear that word deduct. That's a good one.
Especially when we got such a bargain on that section of the installation of the conveyance system in the first place. I mean, that was really a low bid.
Very seldom do we have change orders that result in a deduct. That's...
They do exist.
We had two of them tonight.
Any other comments about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next item was in regards to our 0809 towing. And staff reviewed specifications for the annual towing requirements. And last year, the city initially requested quotes, but when the total came in above $50,000, the contract had to be let out on bids. And the specifications remain the same as the previous years, with the exception of a proposed two-year contract. And a bid opening date is set for December 14, 2007. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve those plans and specifications for the 0809 towing requirements and authorize advertisement of bids to be opened December 14, 2007.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to approve plans and specifications for the towing requirements for 08 and 09, and then authorize advertisement of bids to be opened on December 14 of this year. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The last item was a discussion in regards to the progress on the construction of the detention ponds. And we heard the same explanation that we heard earlier tonight, so I don't even need to go through that, Mr. Mayor. And that was the last item on the agenda, so I would move to file the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just a second on the vote. Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about the detention pond. I heard Mr. Schmidt say today that the Kennedy School will not work because of the water table. We were told that we could gain, what, 30 percent by the three sites, Kennedy, Garfield, and Trot Avenue and Highway 40. What percent will we get now if Kennedy is out? Are we gonna increase the size of the pond at Garfield or at Trot and 40? One other question. Are you seriously looking at any other sites in the city of Wilmer at this time? Or just those two now? Garfield and Trunk Highway, 40 and Trot Avenue?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I recall, the early estimates, and they were very preliminary estimates, were that we might be able to, I think, divert somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 percent of that water. Obviously, without doing Kennedy, would Kennedy have been larger or smaller than Garfield?
Larger.
About the same. Yeah, so I mean, we're gonna reduce it by near, nearly a half of what we thought we could do in those early estimates. But I think it's still a little early to tell. There's room over at Garfield, perhaps, to expand a little bit. But we haven't completed the design of either that one or the one up on Trot Avenue by the tracks.
So Kennedy is out of the picture for right now?
Well, the preliminary results are that the water table's too high.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, the Community Development Committee report for November 15. Councilmember DeBlick.
If I could, just follow up on Mr. Dawkins, the second part of his question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mick, go ahead.
I guess when we were talking about detention areas, we were focusing our efforts on the intersection of 10th and Canulee, what can be done there. As a general matter, no, we have not looked at other areas throughout the community, with the exception that every time new development takes place, we do. Because now they are required by ordinance to meet those kind of stormwater retention issues. You know, we talked at great length about that earlier in the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was the developer projects. The committee discussed issues that have been raised recently with developers requesting that they be allowed to install interstructure or public improvements in their own developments. The requests have come from both commercial and residential projects. Staff stated that the current city policy was that there was no, to be no private work in public right-of-ways or plats. During the past instances of poor, incompleted work, current city policy provides for the city to design, finance, and construct projects. The matter was discussed at length by the committee, and it was agreed that it would be a good topic to be, for the retreat, and that there may be some merit in loosening up this policy in the future. It was a consensus of the committee that the council reaffirm its current policy of not allowing developers to privately contract for work in the public right-of-way. Item number two was the Wilmer Air Service hangar purchase. City Administrator Schmidt provided background information on a proposal to purchase a T-hanger building from Wilmer Air Service. The city had originally looked at building a 24-unit T-hanger, but chose instead to build a 12-unit building at a cost of $300,000. Staff has recommended that the city purchase the Wilmer Air Service T-hanger on a contract for deed at a price of $225,000. A down payment of $75,000 would be paid within 60 days with $50,000 per year paid in 2009, 2010, and 2011, respectively. The anticipated source of the acquisition funds is the $1 million in state bonding grant money is approved in 2005. Due to some issues with the state of Minnesota, it has not yet been determined if those funds were made available for this purchase. Regardless, staff believed it is the best interest of the airports and the city to pursue this acquisition. After discussion, there was a motion made and recommendation to the council that the city proceed with the purchase of the Wilmer Air Service T-hanger on a contract for deed with the above terms, and that the matter be referred to the Planning Commission for their consideration as per city charter. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second that the city proceed with the purchase of the Wilmer Air Service T-hanger on a contract for deed with the terms as described, and then refer the matter to the Planning Commission. Further comment about this? Councilmember Anderson.
I'm confused. What does that mean, we're gonna refer it to the Planning Commission? What if the Planning Commission were to turn it down for some reason? Why do we do that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, anytime the city either purchases or sells property, they're required by the charter to refer it to the Planning Commission for review and comment.
Okay. It's charter language. Yeah.
Other comments about this? This, is this a simple motion or is this a roll call?
Simple motion at this point.
All right. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three on the agenda, Councilmember Christiansen informed the committee that he had contacted the Attorney General's office to follow up on the issue of acquiring the Jurgensen House at 10th Street, Southwest Canulee Avenue. He had stated that he had some concerns about the action taken by the council and he expressed fears that such an acquisition might be considered a gift without a public purpose. Councilmember Christiansen said that the opinion he received from the Attorney General's office was that it would not be considered a gift if it was purchased at the appraised price if the intent was to alleviate drainage issues, thereby addressing the public purpose question. No action was taken on this matter, and it was for information only. And if there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, I would take a motion to file the minutes.
Second. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to expand on that last item. November 14, last Wednesday, I called Attorney General Johnson's office, spoke to Shane Everett because I was concerned about the, some statements that were made at the last council meeting. Took me 10 minutes to explain to them the situation, what had occurred at the council meeting, the flooding at the intersection, the basement that caved in, the need for detention ponding somewhere in that area or near there. And at that time, he involved two other attorneys in our conversation. And they spoke about it and asked me a few questions, and they came to the conclusion. We spoke a little less than 30 minutes on the phone. They said there's, as long as we would negotiate an appraised value for that property, not paying any more than what it's worth today, there's no such as, there's no gift involved. Only if we'd pay them more than what it's valued at today would there be considered a gift. So if we, and the motion was to direct staff to negotiate terms with them in buying that property. As far as public purpose, if you read the letter that was sent to the mayor by our city attorney, it states that such activity will serve as a benefit to the community as a attorney, it states that such activity will serve as a benefit of the community, as a body, and which at the same time is directly related to the functions of government. Pretty much what they told me on the phone. And this does relate to public purpose. It is a public purpose. The motion was to direct staff to negotiate with the owners of that property for purchase of it for the intention of a detention pond or rain gardens at the specific location as part of the solution, part of the solution to some of the flooding over there. Due to that conversation that I had and with that information, I would like to enter the motion to do the same thing we did the last meeting. I would make a motion that we direct staff to negotiate with the owners of that property for purchase of that property in appraised value, in today's value, and to, for the purpose of making a detention pond or a rain garden in that area as a start to the solution of the problem over there.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the table.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion on the floor.
What was the motion?
File a minute.
File a minute.
Motion and a second.
Second to file a minute.
Okay, let's get this in order, then. So we have to deal with the first motion, then come back to the second motion. All right. The first motion is to file the minutes, and it's been seconded. Any other comment? Those in favor of filing the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion to file the minutes carries. Now, Mr. Christensen has made a motion that this matter, the Jorgensen House, be referred to staff to negotiate a purchase. It's been seconded by Mr. Gardner. Councilmember Gardner. Further comment on this? Councilmember Reese.
I still have the same problem with it. The city of Wilmer has a storm sewer system. And that storm sewer system encompasses sixty miles of storm sewer, and eleven hundred storm sewer manholes, two thousand five hundred catch basins. And when an excessive rain causes flooding, the city's always responded to flood complaints, and the city employees have cleaned out the catch basins and the storm drains, or the storm system. And the city does not cover any flood damages. Excessive rain, as I said at the last meeting, is considered an act of God, and the city isn't responsible for damages resulting from these events. And the definition of an act of God is a legal term for events outside of human control, such as sudden floods or other natural disasters, which no one can be held responsible for. And I don't believe that the city has been or is negligent in maintenance or construction of its storm system. The city cannot be held responsible for extraordinary rainfalls, nor to believe that a stormwater system that is overburdened by too much rain can be considered a failed system. So if the city isn't negligent, there's no basis for the city to make any payments for damages, of course, and I know that's not what you're looking for.
It is not the intent.
But if the city council decides to help out in this case by buying the Jorgensen property, I would guess, as we discussed last time, and Councilmember DeBlique brought up, and also our city attorney has commented on, that there may be others that have suffered damages who also may claim to have experienced a loss because of flooding, or because the property owner feels that the city has been negligent not to correct the perceived system deficiencies, and they too may then expect to be reimbursed by the city. If there's payments or financial assistance extended to any of the affected property owners, that financial assistance then would be a gift. I know you and I conflict on that position, but the Attorney General has ruled this would be an unlawful expenditure and of tax dollars. And our city attorney has advised us the same. And the city attorney's clients are the mayor and the city council, and we act as a body. And one of the most important functions of the city attorney is his rendering advice to the city council to make sure that our actions fall within the framework of the law, and that the city attorney advises the city council on subset of legal issues such as this, and the possible legal ramifications of courses of action that we may take, and on matters directed, directly affecting the conduct of city council business. Our city attorney has, was long ago appointed, and has served in that capacity for a long time. And the city, and he is appointed by the council to act as legal advisor in matters relating to our official duties, including legal research, which he did in this case, advice, which he did in this case, and counsel to the city council, also to staff and then planning commission and other boards that the city utilizes his services. He also represents the city in court and performs legal work whenever necessary. The mayor and all of us sitting at this table represent the citizens, the residents of the city. So when the city attorney's office advises and represents the mayor and the council, he also, the residents of the city benefit directly or indirectly from the advice and representation. And our city attorney has advised us that, in his opinion, if we move forward and purchase the Jorgensen property, the precedent would then be set, and the precedent would be very broad. In his letter, he wrote, "The precedent would be the overall policy of using public funds to help a private citizen that has sustained a loss due to an act of God. It could be something as minor as having a flooded basement and needing to replace carpeting and paneling. The policy that would be established by the aforementioned council action would therefore be considerably broader than just the acquisition of a home." We've been advised, and that's what we hire him for, and the Minnesota Supreme Court defines public purpose as "such activity as will serve as a benefit to the community, as a body, and which at the same time is directly related to the functions of government." As sympathetic as each one of us at this table may be to the Jorgensons' loss and their resulting dilemma, I can't and will not at any time vote in favor of purchasing their property based on the city attorney's advice and the Supreme Court's ruling. And I feel that if the city by the action of the council purchases the Jorgensen property, we would simply be helping out the Jorgensons, and the public purpose would not be served. And this action would be an unlawful expenditure of city funds. And I feel that this action could possibly be contested in the courts, and we would be asking the city attorney, who has already advised us against this action, and he would probably be representing us. Ron, I seriously doubt that by purchasing the one lot and building a detention pond of that size is going to have any effect on the amount of water detained in a large rainfall event. That's, you know, I see where you're coming from, and I understand, but I really don't think that the public purpose is going to be served in that fact.
Just a second, Ron, I'll get to you. Anybody else want to comment before I go back to, Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ronnie, how can having water in one's basement rise to the same level as having a house that's been condemned?
Councilman Dawkins, it's the same concept. The concept is using public funds to alleviate a private problem.
But they're not a comparable situation in my mind. I mean, a wall collapsing, a house being condemned, and someone having water in their basement, it isn't the same precedent, or whatever the legal term would be.
It's using public funds to solve a private problem, whether it's a big problem or a small problem.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my mind, a public purpose is served if you look at this as an opportunity to search out other potentially less expensive problems than what it is that we're talking about. If we're talking about not using Kennedy, for example, that's, and I forget what the figure was, if it was seven thousand cubic yards that we were counting on there for stormwater detention, we're potentially looking at having to build some underground facilities at some point in time. I just, there's not enough surface area to do anything on a large scale. Now, it's kind of interesting, in this handout that we have here, it talks about these urban stormwater gardens, these rainwater gardens, well-studied, effective, easily created on a large scale by landscaping firms, and on a small scale by homeowners. Benefits include lower cost to government and business than for traditional stormwater infrastructure, such as detention basins in curb and gutter. Wants, and it says here, wants an experimental attempt by the city of Maplewood to deal with flooding in a two-block area in 1996. Rain garden use in Minnesota is expanding. I don't see where this couldn't be anything but an opportunity to take a property that is ideally situated for something like this, never mind the fact that they've been flooded out of the home. It's really not what we're talking about here when we talk about public purpose. The public purpose would be to investigate other areas of small-scale detention. Perhaps we don't need to do these large projects if we're able to institute some type of project program that allows for smaller, community-wide detention ponds. And I think it's extremely well worth looking at in terms of, in terms of what we could possibly do. I'm extremely impressed by what's in this handout that we received tonight. And I find it interesting that bar engineering was involved in that work.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of thoughts, you know, and I've said previously, and I'll say again, you know, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. We directed staff to come up with some solutions and some possibilities. You know, right now, maybe the detention ponds have hit some obstacles, and maybe we'll get around it, maybe we won't, but let's let this process work. You know, maybe the solution is going to be something altogether different on down the road. Secondly, I can't believe that this body would consider something that our attorney has said is an illegal action. We can argue and talk about semantics all we want, but if our attorney says it's not legal, why are we even talking about it? I just can't believe that we would consider doing something that our attorney is advising us not to do.
Councilmember DeBlique.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Anderson. I think we need to let this process follow through and work. We have, city staff is currently looking at stormwater, rainwater issues that would affect this neighborhood, and also with the, very concerned with the issue that precedent setting, and our city attorney has advised us to not proceed with this type of action, and saying it's illegal, and it would set precedents broadly across other issues that could be brought up against the city. So I don't agree with the motion.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I never said that the city was negligent in their storm sewer process anywhere along the line. Second of all, I'm not being sympathetic. I don't think Councilmember Gardner is, or anyone else who agrees with us. Thirdly, the statement that doing a rain garden or a detention pond on that site won't do any good, Mel told us at the last meeting, it would. That whole area is a detention pond presently. If you were over there after that rain, all the backyard's at eight, ten, twelve, fourteen inches of water, and before they hit the house, it's low, it's low, low area. So it is a detention pond. Few days later, it goes away. So it is working, and it will help. My biggest beef here is the premise that you all hold. What our city attorney is representing is a false premise here. We're not being sympathetic. We're not giving him the owner, I could care less who the owner of that property is. I'm not concerned about giving him some gratis money or helping him out because he's got a flooded basement. I'm concerned about a detention pond and solutions to that problem over there. The sudden flooding that happens that Councilman Reese brought up, we can control sudden flooding. One way is a detention pond, or to stop it somewhere up the line, Garfield School or wherever. This will help. The, you keep going back, you, the attorney, Councilmember Reese, Anderson, that we're doing something illegal here. I spent thirty minutes, or less than thirty minutes, on the phone with the state Attorney General, and then two attorneys, and Mr. Everett, came to the conclusion that we weren't. And I told him everything. I didn't leave anything out. Took me ten minutes, and he said, "Public purpose is being served, we're not setting a precedent, and we're not giving a gift to somebody." It is not my intention, or those who agree with me, that we're going to give them a gift just because they got flooded. My intention is to get to work and solve some of these problems. If we're going to do Garfield, fine, but that isn't, that isn't the total answer. There's more than one answer to this problem. And I stand by my motion, and I, I don't, if I thought it was illegal, I would not have made this motion. That's why I called the state Attorney General's office. I didn't like to be told that it was illegal. I don't think it's illegal. I think we're doing what's proper. We're trying to solve a problem here, or, it's part of the solution. It is part of the solution. If you don't think it is, I haven't convinced you then. But I stand by my motion.
Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I respect the city attorney and the work that he does for us. Regardless of whether I agree with his opinion or not, I do want to remind the council that when we had an issue a couple of years ago regarding a developers' agreement, where we were asked to include a self-help provision on behalf of the contractor, we were advised that we should not do that. And yet this body on a seven-to-one vote decided to go ahead with that, with that premise, that we include that with the agreement, and we disregarded the city attorney in that, in that instance. Whether that was right or wrong, the fact of the matter is, is that the council, at the end of the day, is the decision-making body.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fagerlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ron, were they willing to put their names on a letter and state, because I've had a lot of conversations with people, and they say one thing, but they're not willing to sign their name on a documentation?
I could call them and find out. I called them again today to ask if I could use his name. He said, "Sure, go ahead."
You know, instead of buying the property out, I mean, if you have to appraise it as is today, the value is basically the lot value, so.
I realize that.
Yeah.
I think Councilman Gardner realized that. I think the owners realize that.
You know, it depends if they have a mortgage, how much they owe on the mortgage. Their mortgage company might not let it go, might have to go into foreclosure. Otherwise, you know, we'd be better off buying a lot for them, and let them move the house themselves, and we'll just trade, trade lots. I can see some public purpose there at that intersection, but...
All right, we have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. Is there any more? Is there any more discussion or comment about this?
Just to make sure the motion is understood, is to direct staff to negotiate with the owners to purchase that property for the intention of a detention pond at that location. They may not be able to negotiate with them. They may offer them zero. They may not be able to come to terms. But at least we could try.
I'd like to offer a couple of comments as the mayor. You know, it's a tragedy when somebody's house is ruined by whatever purpose, whatever happens. If it's a fire, a flood, somebody hits the building, it's a tragedy. Fortunately, nobody was, lost their life, and it was very close, as I understand. It seems like, you know, we're going in two directions here, but maybe we're not. You know, we've asked the staff to create an option here. And that's what they're working on. They've invested considerable time and money already, and they're not done yet. In my mind, I've not heard the council, except for a couple of members here, say that we wanted a detention pond in that area. You know, and now we're just creating it by this motion to purchase. You know, it sounds like your, the motion is to go ahead and purchase the land, and then, you know, we'll, we'll create the detention pond, but the council hasn't said that that's what they want to do. At least in my memory. I haven't heard anybody on this council say, or in Public Works Committee, or say that, you know, we need to have a detention pond at that intersection. Nobody said that.
It was an option presented to us. It was one of the options, Mr. Mayor.
But I think it was an option when they talked about purchasing, you know, that perhaps in the future we'd have to purchase several lots. Several lots, not just one. And, you know, how much does one lot really accomplish? When you're talking about hundreds of thousands of, or thousands of gallons of water? What does one lot really accomplish? I, I don't, I don't know, but I don't know that it does that much. And rain ponds, are they really? I don't know that much about rain ponds. Ron's in construction, he probably knows a lot about that. I don't. But, you know, how effective are they at getting rid of water? I don't know. And I don't think we've, you know, that's been presented to the council as the driving reason why we should purchase this land. It's, it's a suggestion on how to use the land. But this council hasn't decided that's what we really, really need to do. And I, as far as our own city's attorney's opinion, Mr. Ronning has been around this city for a long time, and he, he knows what he talks about. And I have full confidence in his opinion. Now, maybe it's different than the attorney general's office. But, I mean, if this is, if this is the way that the council's going to go, I would hope the council would want our city attorney to talk to the attorney general's office. Because there obviously is a difference of opinion here. You know, and I've seen Mr. Ronning's written opinion, I have, you know, and I've heard Ron's verbal report. I haven't seen any written report yet from the attorney general's office. But Mr. Ronning is hired to protect the council and the mayor's office, and he does a good job of that. All right, that's my comments, and now I think it's time to vote, if you're ready to vote. This is a motion. I'm going to go with a roll call. Kevin?
Councilmember Dawkins?
Uh, no.
Fagerly?
What was this, no? To buy it or not?
Move to direct staff to negotiate with the property owner to buy it.
No.
DeBleek?
No.
Reese?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Three ayes, five nays.
The motion is defeated. All right, we move on. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a preliminary final plat called the West Pump Station Addition. Bruce, would you explain that, please?
Mayor Heike, members of the council. The West Pump Station Addition is a one-lot plat for Wilmer Municipal Utilities. It's located north of the city or on the north, northern part of the city along County Road Five. It's a simple outlot plat and will serve as the location for a water pumping station. The planning commission has reviewed the plat and recommends approval.
Thank you, Bruce. Any comments or questions from the council on this? I would take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat called the West Pump State Addition. Pump Station Addition. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is a consideration of a preliminary plat called the Fair Acre Addition. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council. Fair Acre Addition is proposed as a six-lot, single-family home residential development on the property that was annexed by ordinance earlier this evening. This property's on 15th Street Southwest. The plat shows the property being accessed by a cul-de-sacs, by a cul-de-sac and by having six very large residentially treated lots. The planning commission approved a preliminary plat with conditions regarding utility easements, infrastructure, and some stormwater issues. Tonight, I placed at each of your stations a letter drafted by the developer, Don Williamson. And in that letter, he explains their thoughts on developing the property. He explains why they've chosen the design they did, and also expressed some concern over the staff and commission review, and has requested that the council table the preliminary plat of Fair Acres Addition. So, with that being the request of the developer, staff would offer that recommendation as well, and that's that the plat be tabled.
Thank you, Bruce. I'd like to read into the public record a letter from Don and Carol Williamson, addressed to the mayor and council members. It says, "My name is Don Williamson, and I own approximately 12.2 acres of land, which is being annexed into the city of Wilmer tonight. This acreage contains large, five-foot-plus diameter cottonwoods, silver maples, basswood, ash, and various other trees. My wife and I are proposing to create a six-lot subdivision called Fair Acres Addition, which integrates and sustains those beautiful trees. We are planning on building a home on one of the lots. At full development, we anticipate that property taxes for each lot would exceed $6,000 each. Two lots have been spoken for, and a strong interest has been garnered for the remaining lots. For over 22 years, my wife and I have lived on a cul-de-sac at 2015 Fifth Street Southwest in Wilmer. We love cul-de-sac living because it's peacefulness and strong neighborhood atta-, because of its peacefulness and strong neighborhood attachment. In developing our dream, we desire to create a spacious street which maintains the peacefulness and serenity of the surrounding environment. On November 14, 2007, we proposed an environmentally friendly cul-de-sac with integral stormwater management plat to the planning and zoning committee. General comments from the committee and audience have been overwhelmingly positive and enthusiastic. However, I was just made aware that a lengthy list of Public Works comments were published and subsequently attached as conditions of the plat. Many of the comments were geared towards a traditional street, and therefore may not enable the type of development we are proposing. For this reason, I respectfully request the council to table our Fair Acres Addition preliminary plat submitted pending further review."
I'll move to table.
Second. We have a motion and a second to table this proposal. For the comment, Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, is there a limit of time on this tabling? Is there a 60-day rule or something on this too, or? There are timeframes that are spelled out in statute and the city's subdivision ordinance, but I don't believe the 60-day rule per se applies to plats. At some point in the plating process, that will be triggered, but I don't believe it's triggered by the preliminary plating process. The preliminary plating process is the gathering of information in the design phase. So, we're okay. We'll continue to work with the developer and move the process along.
And then you'll let, you'll let us know and we should take it off the table, and basically?
Yeah, we'll, we'll actually bring it back as a formal agenda item again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly?
I see Mr. Bowleg is here, their engineer. Could he just come up to the podium and just briefly tell the council your, your idea? I know I've, I've seen basic plan of it, and I thought it was pretty darn good.
Welcome, Brian.
I have an interesting position to be in here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on Don Williamson's behalf. We have proposed is a, is a cul-de-sac that would allow a standard 70-foot right-of-way street width with driving lanes of 16 feet on, on either direction. It's actually four foot wider than a standard driving lane width of a typical street. However, this differs in that, in the inner portion of the street, the difference essentially between 70-foot and the, and the two 16-foot driving lanes would be a, a grass area that would be structured turf that would allow homeowners, visitors to essentially park in the, in the middle of the street. It would also allow rainwater that would be coming off the impervious surface of the street to be directed towards the grass area and infiltrate into, into the soil directly. And then be embodied by a, a P-rock or similar rock structure. Very similar to how American State Bank was approved on 19th Avenue and 1st Street several years ago. In addition to that, there would be no catch basins in the street. Everything would be directed to the center. It would percolate down through the soil. But then in times when that froze, the ground was frozen and it could not percolate, the street would be sloped in such a manner that at the end of the cul-de-sac, we would have a large 100-foot diameter depressed area, similar to a large rain garden, that would situate there and allow water to pond in that garden and then attenuate itself slowly and migrate itself back out. There's an existing private drain tile system on the land purchased by Don Williamson. There's three tile outlets from his, from his property into that system. Our proposal is to utilize that system and ensure that the rate of runoff is no greater than it is today for both the 10 and the 100-year storm event. This plat has a, a typical cul-de-sac of this size would have a approximately a 35 to 40% impervious surface. We are proposing about a 13% impervious surface with this development. And so, it's, would looks starkly different than what we've seen previously. What we're hoping to do is detach essentially the rainfall from the impervious surface and allow it to be depressed in the existing ground, either through the rock structure or through the depressed area. We also propose that the interior of this street would be managed by an association, so the maintenance would be taken care of, and that we'd use some of the storm water for irrigation purposes of some of the green space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Brian. Nice to see you again. You talked about, you mentioned rain gardens. And that would be something like this, and potentially you could even put something like that in a, for example, in a front yard, correct?
Correct, yes.
Well, that's interesting. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Brian?
I have a question. How did you know to come here tonight at this time of the meeting? Were you at home watching this meeting on television?
Well, Bruce informed me that about 9:30 this would come up. And my wife had other engagements earlier tonight, so...
Okay, I was just curious, because you come walking in right at the right time, and who, you know, we can't predict this meeting, so I was wondering how you predicted it.
You're right on schedule. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council members? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Brian, it's funny you should mention impervious surface and using rain gardens. What you have designed there for that area, 12.2 acres, will it work?
Yes.
You're positive?
Yes.
100%?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, the motion is to approve the preliminary, no, no, the motion is to table and for further discussion. Did we vote on that yet, Kevin?
We have not, but we have a motion and a second.
All right, those in favor of tabling this issue, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is the consideration of another preliminary plat called the ODP Addition. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, this will be an easy one. The applicant called today and withdrew the plat from consideration, so...
All right, thank you, Bruce. Number 17 is a consideration of an ordinance to rezon certain property from residential five to limited business. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council. Leo Martinez has proposed the rezoning of a property at 201 Southeast Becker Avenue from R5 Residential to limited business. He's operated an insurance business at that location as a home occupation. Due to growth of the business, as well as the growth of his family, he's requested that he be allowed to use the entire facility strictly for the business, hiring outside employees and necessitating a change in zoning because he can no longer be considered a home occupation. The rezoning was approved by the planning commission at their meeting last week. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance for the rezoning be introduced for a public hearing on December 3.
Thank you. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce an ordinance at a public hearing on December 3 on behalf of Leo Martinez. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Bruce, is, is this the Martinez that has an office downtown right now? He's in the, you know, the same area that Congressman Colin Peterson's office is?
Right, I believe he used to be in there several months ago. He, he got his home occupation approved and moved it over to his house, and has made a lot of improvements to the property. It's a very nice-looking property.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of revised right-of-way plats wastewater treatment plant interceptor project. Craig, are you handling that?
Yep. Mayor Heike, members of the council. At your regular meeting last time, you approved right-of-way plat numbers one through eight and 11. Since that time, we needed to modify four of those right-of-way plats. One by adding two remnant parcels as a result of a successful, a successful negotiation to purchase. And the other three, that being numbers six, seven, and eight, were modified to include public utility easements on both halves of the town road over which those plats describe acquisitions. So what we're asking is to, for the council to re-approve right-of-way plats number five, six, seven, and eight.
Thanks, Craig.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the revised right-of-way plats for plats five, six, seven, and eight.
That is correct.
Further comment? Kevin, is that a simple motion?
No.
Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Under miscellaneous, we have an item that was added at the beginning about the interceptor line. Kevin, do you want to explain that, or Craig?
Don't take that.
Craig, please.
Mayor Heike, members of the council. At the city council meeting of November 5, you passed a just compensation resolution number three. We've determined that we need to amend that resolution so that the time in which we control the temporary easements is consistent with the length of the project. So this resolution allows that modification to be made so that the temporary easements, principally along 30th Avenue Southwest, are in effect through November 2012 to allow construction to be completed. are in effect through November 2012 to allow construction to be completed.
Okay, so what's the motion you need then?
To approve the amending resolution to 07-10, Just Compensation, to properly state the length of duration for temporary easements.
All right, council?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, I forgot what the word, Project 07-10, Just Compensation, in the way it was just described to you. I missed it.
Temporary easements.
Temporary.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comment about that or questions? Why didn't the mayor understand that? Okay, those in, is that a roll call too?
Yes, sir, it is.
Roll call?
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. The next item is under miscellaneous also, and that has to do with the discussion at the hospital board. And Rich, are you ready to give an opinion on that? Whether or not the council can change the charter by unanimous vote? Or does this need to be studied, or do we have to open up a new charter commission, or what?
The only way you can approach this is to activate the charter commission. Once the charter commission acts and if they recommend that the terms, number of terms be increased, then you can proceed by ordinance, but it has to originate out of the charter commission.
All right, how long does that hold? Doesn't it have to start with a court order to call the charter commission or something?
It does now because of the fact that the charter commission hasn't been active for so many years that as a practical matter, there isn't a charter commission. And the charter commission is appointed by the chief judge of the district.
Time-wise, your timeline, how long does all this stuff take to? You have to submit something to the court, they have to?
We have to find the people willing to serve, then submit the names to the chief judge. And it's a routine matter once you have the names of people that are willing to serve.
Any idea how many people have to serve on a charter commission?
I believe it's 15.
What I would like to suggest to the council is that this be referred to the labor committee for further discussion. And perhaps at that point invite in the hospital administrator to discuss it with the labor committee and run it through that process. Unfortunately, it's right at the end of the year when things are getting kind of tight with people going off the board, but I know it might affect the people currently on the board, but this is an important issue in terms of the overall governance of the hospital. So, was the council, Rod?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did I hear, Rich, you said it has to go through the charter? I heard you say something about an ordinance.
It has to go to the charter commission. And then if they make a recommendation to go ahead and change the number of terms that a person can serve, then the council can proceed by ordinance. Doesn't have to, I mean, it can go to an election. But if you want to avoid the election, then it can go by ordinance. But it has to originate out of the charter commission.
And, refresh me again. We open the charter commission, anything goes?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's like opening the Constitution of the state of Minnesota. Once it's open, anything can be put into it. All right, so the, can we just agree to put it on the labor committee? Is that okay? We don't need a motion to that effect? Councilmember Dawkin, do you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is really quite a bite to take on the part of a citizen. That's nine years that that person could serve on that board. That's a long time to expect a citizen to serve on one board. That's a very long time.
Those are three, three-year terms.
Three, three-year terms, nine years.
Yeah.
So both parties would have to want to do that. The individual and the council would have to reappoint and the individual would have to seek reappointment, so. I think what's going to happen here, and I think Mr. Massa will explain this further, is that the State Hospital Association may begin to establish their own regulations for hospital board members. That includes education and certification. And that board members who are on a hospital board will have to, like other professional groups, will have to be, have to gain a certain level of certification by hours of training. And so I think that's why he's concerned about investing in board members and board members investing that much time themselves. It's like a school. All right, that'll go to labor. The next thing is this, under miscellaneous, is this the result of the joint discussion between the county board, the school board, and the city council wanting two members from each group to meet with the administrator of all three groups. That'd be Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Kleindell, and Kathy, Ms. Leadham, Kathy Leadham. And so I'd like to also put that into the labor committee. And you guys talk about that and figure out, make a recommendation on which two council members should be appointed to that. I could just appoint him, but I just would have labor talk it over a little bit. Steve, are you all right with that? Are you the labor chairperson?
Yes.
So is that okay with the council to do that? All right. That's all, I also just want to make a comment, I know it's very late, but this week, our community lost a great citizen, and that was Dr. Lyle Monarchy. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take just a moment to recognize Dr. Monarchy. Lyle was one of these kind of Renaissance people who had his hands in many different aspects of the community. Professionally, recreationally, intellectually. He was a promoter, he was a recruiter, he was a fundraiser, he was a Harley-Davidson rider, and he was a great doctor. And he contributed on many levels to this community for many, many years. And I just want to extend our condolences to his wife, Alvinah, and to his family. And to say that as a community and as a city, we very much appreciated his contribution to many things. I had the opportunity to first meet him back in 1987 when I first came to the community. And he and I served on the hospital board of directors together. And Dr. Monarchy, always knew where he stood. He was very blunt, but he was very caring, and everybody knew Dr. Monarchy. So our condolences to his family and Godspeed to Dr. Monarchy. I understand he and his family selected that he be buried back in South Dakota where he came from. Council committee meeting dates, finance.
Thank you. The finance committee will meet Monday at the Holiday Inn, 5:00 PM. This will be a meeting for everybody. It will be the budget and associated items, and I suspect it will be a lively and long meeting.
Thank you, Dennis. Public works, public safety.
Based upon his lively and long meeting, we aren't going to have one.
Community development.
No meeting at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Labor.
Mr. Mayor, labor committee will meet on Wednesday, the 12th at 4:45. We just?
Wednesday the what?
Wednesday, the 12th of next month at 4:45, just a heads up.
December 12th?
We like to plan ahead.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
4:45. Okay, we have just two other quick announcements. The police department wants the public to know that there is a cops meeting, a community-oriented policing meeting for Tuesday, November 20th, that's tomorrow night, at 7:00 PM at the Wilmer Senior Citizen Center. There will not be a meeting in December. So that's Ward 1, Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving Meeting, Wilmer Senior Citizen Center at 7:00 PM tomorrow night. Ward 4 will have their cops meeting on Monday, November 26th at 7:00 PM at Calvary Lutheran Church in the Friendship Room. Also, Ward 4 will not have a meeting in the month of December. And finally, we received notice that Senator Norm Coleman will be traveling around this section of Minnesota holding three town hall forums on health care. He'll present his vision for health care and seek input from community members. He's coming to Wilmer and will be at Rice Memorial Hospital from 12 to 12 o'clock noon until 1:20 on, let me get there, on November 26th, which is next Monday.
Did you get that location right, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me?
The location of that meeting?
Rice Memorial Hospital Lakewood Auditorium.
Yes, okay.
At the hospital, again, Monday, November 26th, at noon time, Senator Norm Coleman. His meetings are always informative and he's very good at mixing up the discussions. So I invite any of you who can to be there or even for part of it. I think we've done enough business tonight. Would anybody like to, or Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to be excused from the next council meeting, I won't be in town.
All right, thanks, Frank. Would anybody like to make a motion?
So move.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion and it's been seconded, we are adjourned.